Thank you very much for your patience in us getting started. I apologize that we ran a little bit long an executive session, but we are now ready to start. So if everyone could rise and we could say the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lorraine, if you could call the roll, please. Brenda Avanzato. Here. Don Biscardin.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Here.
Robert Jones.
Here.
Julia Mudge.
Here.
Kimberly Page.
Here.
Julia Howell.
Here.
Dana Locken.
Here.
Thank you. Lorraine, if you could call the calendars, please. February 15th, Budget Subcommittee Meeting, 8:00 a.m., Central Administration Building. That's a recent addition to your calendar. February 18th, President's Day, schools and offices closed. February 18th to February 22nd, winter recess. February 20th, Wednesday, currently scheduled School Committee Business Meeting, which was rescheduled from the 26th. February 26th is a wellness meeting, 3:30 p.m., Davisville Middle School. Thank you. Thank you. All right, that brings us to Presentations and Recognitions. So, thank you, Barbara, for waiting so long. Why don't we go ahead and get started with the Cozy presentation?
This is Barbara Sweeney, everybody. Barbara has, in the last few years, run our Cozy program and before that has been someone who has worked in the program for several years. I think it's important, on occasion, to have a presentation about a lot of the different programs in the district and probably more important than the work that the Cozy is doing. So I've asked her to give us a brief informational presentation tonight and to take questions upon completion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. O'Jay, and thank you so much for giving a few minutes of your time to hear about the Cozy programs. Traditionally, we try to present to the school committee every year or so, particularly when there are new members seated, so we can bring you up to speed on what we're doing and hopefully familiarize you with our programs if you don't already know about them. I am one of the co-directors of the Cozy Family Learning Partnership. My colleague Brenda Potter unfortunately had an illness in her family and was not able to be here tonight. Just a few quick facts about Cozy. Cozy is actually an acronym, one of the many we like to throw around in the school department. It stands for Child Opportunity Zone. And the program has been live and well in the state of Rhode Island for close to 20 years. It started in 1994, and North Kingstown was one of the original 17 or 18 sites. A few of them fell off, and we've had a core group of about 10 sites for the last 15 or so years. We are one of only two sites to be located in South County, Westerly being the other one. The others are located in the core cities and a few in the East Bay. North Kingstown is not traditionally a community that you might think of to support Cozy. We were asked by Department of Ed to start this program way back in '94 based on the need that was particularly evident in Davisville and has continued to grow and expand since then. Again, Cozy stands for Child Opportunity Zone on the state level. We've recently begun some discussions with our board and particularly our Branding Subcommittee to think about how reflective is that of our true mission? And really, after talking it through, wondered about the idea of the C being better represented by the word "community." So that's just something we're sort of thinking about because we really are here to serve members of the entire North Kingstown community, not just children. It's certainly children, students, families, as well as the larger community. So that's sort of something we're thinking about. But whether C is for child or community, we are still the Cozy or the cause, as some people refer to us. We are a program of the school department. We operate under the fiscal authority and the program authority of the NKSD. My colleagues and I all act as employees of the school department. We are advised by a governing board as well, made up of some very wonderful people, including Dr. Humbert and Mrs. Page, who've lent their expertise to helping drive our programs. We started with one very part-time employee back in '94, up to 14 full and mostly part-time, a couple of full-time employees across about eight different programs. And our program delivery model really is designed to complement, supplement, the wonderful work that's being done every day in the school department. So we talk about being full-day, full-year extended learning opportunities before school, after school, during the summer, programs in school, in the home, and in the community. Our mission in the Cozy is to bring NK families, students, and schools together, ensuring that all children are after-school ready to learn. Everything we do is based on our belief and our desire to make, that it's so important for children to enter school ready to learn and helping support parents to help their children be ready to learn. That brings us to our next point. We're committed to making sure that families have the tools and support to confidently raise healthy, empowered children. You'll often hear the phrase, throughout our programs, "We believe that parents are their child's first and best teacher." So everything we do is based on supporting parents in their role as their child's teacher, not just when they're young, before school, but throughout their school experience. And finally, our mission also includes offering students meaningful extended learning opportunities. Again, that's before school, that after school, enrichment and academic support during the school year as well as during the summer. You'll see our list of programs. I won't go through every program. Hopefully, some of our staff will be able to present at subsequent meetings and give you a little bit more detailed information. I also have some handouts that I'll be giving you that explain our programs in a little bit more detail. But the first four programs you see, the Parents as Teachers, or PAT, Door to the District, Child Outreach, and NK Connect, really are early child programs designed to meet parents and support them at the earliest possible opportunities, whether it is identifying an early delay in their child and making sure that they're hooked up with the appropriate resources through a child outreach screening, through a Parents as Teachers home visit where a trained parent educator would come into the home delivering an international curriculum, an internationally-based curriculum, based on the latest brain science on what is appropriate child development, what is healthy child development, helping parents understand what they can expect from their child and when something just might not be right and what they can do about that, really helping parents advocate for their child's success. Door to the District is one of our newer programs, helping meet parents and children when they're entering the school department at age three, if they have a child with special needs and they're entering the preschool program. As appreciated, it can be a very daunting experience for parents, so to have an advocate who's helping them steer the course is incredibly helpful. Moving down to our next two programs, Family Centers and the 21st Century Community Learning Centers. The Family Centers are really the heart of our original programming and sort of near and dear to my heart because that's what I did when I first worked for Cozy. They're places located both at Quiddneset Elementary and at Davisville Middle that are really the families' place in the building. We run all of our family support programs for the school out of there, as well as our 21st Century Community Learning Centers, or 21C, you might hear it referred to. I'm particularly proud of 21C. We're in our sixth year of programming. We received funding for a second five-year cycle. We are one of only 16 communities funded out of 41 in the state. Again, North Kingstown has to be very competitive when we're up in Pawtucket and Socket and Central Falls and Providence, so I'm very, very proud of the fact that we wrote such a competitive grant and they found it, RIDE found it worthy to fund us for another five-year cycle. This provides critical before and after-school funding and summer funding to provide programs for our students, so I'm really, really proud that we can continue to offer that to our families. The last two items are Community Integration for Homeless Students and Title I Administration Compliance. Cozy simply helps fulfill district obligations, federal district obligations that any school department would have to do in serving homeless families and ensuring that all the guidelines of Title I are met and fulfilled. Just to give you a snapshot of what we do, remember, we're only 14 people. Most of us work part-time, but we do quite a bit in that time with those limited resources. This is a sort of a snapshot from our last full program year of 2011 and '12. Through our Child Outreach Program, we screened over 400 three- and four-year-olds as part of the federally mandated child outreach screenings, 40 Door to District family meetings, 22 four-year-olds enrolled in our NK Connect preschool program. And I'll let you go on and read that, but hopefully you're impressed with the many, many opportunities and types of outreach that we do to families and the multiple ways in which we engage parents for school success. I'll just give you a minute to go down that. I do want to touch on the very last one, multiple family engagement opportunities at Quiddneset. One of our most successful family engagement opportunities is what we call Have Lunch With Your Child. It's a very simple concept of inviting parents to come in and share a meal with their child. It's a doorbuster at Quiddneset. The parents just can't get in fast enough and more frequent enough. They usually do it four times a year. It's a program we run for close to 10 years. It costs nothing, but it's the most simple idea of parents and children sharing a meal together. Teachers are encouraged to come in and say hello to parents, to greet them, to share our success or struggle that their child's been having. So it's a great way for teachers and parents to connect in a non-traditional way, in a way that is a little bit more welcoming and might be a little bit less intimidating for parents. So we consider it one of our greatest successes and are very proud that we can continue to do that. A very, very simple idea. Wanted to share just a few outcomes. Years of study and research has substantiated the benefits of high-quality early childhood programs in terms of student achievement, and we're getting some new research now on the importance and the success of home visiting programs on positive outcomes for children. So for example, just a few of the outcomes show an increase in maternal satisfaction through home visiting, as well as a decrease in incidence of child abuse and neglect. We definitely see some improved academic outcomes, as well as the important longer-term community outcomes of increased work readiness, longer enrollment in school, and increased ability to have a skilled job. So when we're really tying together these very early inputs with these much later outcomes, hopefully substantiates the importance of keeping the funding for early childhood programs. Speaking of funding, we are almost entirely, about 99% grant-funded or soft funding. We do access portions of Title I, IDEAAB and IDEA preschool to fulfill district mandates. Cozy's the vehicle that helps drive that for the district. It's a natural fit because our programs are designed to work with children and families, particularly those at high risk. We have the inroads to deliver these programs in combination with our other family support programs. I mentioned our 21st Century Community Learning Center. That's $120,000 a year for five years. McKinney-Bento, which is federal funding for service to homeless students. That's very shaky, we're on kind of shaky ground with that now. We're in the final year of a three-year cycle. The money drops every year. I don't know if we will be able to get funding for that next year. The RFP comes out from RIDE later on in the spring. We do get $15,000 from the school department. That goes toward our child outreach screenings. That is a federal mandate, so the district is obligated to provide that. So the district contributes $15,000 to the salary of our child outreach coordinator. We get $21,200 from RIDE for our core Cozy programs, and we have $5,000 from Rhode Island Foundation to do our work with a consultant who's helping drive some of our programs for us. We have some RFPs or, excuse me, some grants we've recently applied for that we're waiting to hear back on from Hasbro Summer Learning Initiative and United Way Funding for supplemental after-school programming, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we'll get some good news about those. Just a quick list of some of the community partnerships, because I mentioned the C in Cozy really can stand for community, showing that we're not just an insular school department program. Our core funding through the Cozy grant comes from the Rhode Island Department of Ed. Obviously, most of our funding is funneled through RIDE, 21st Century, McKinney, Title I, IDEA. The Recreation Department is our lead partner in our 21st Century program, so we're very excited about our strong partnership with them to deliver programming year-round. And then just some other community organizations that we've worked with over the years, either to apply for funding or deliver programming because we work with so many of the same families. So we really try to keep our hand very strongly in the community. Finally, I'll just ask you for your continued support, and Dr. O'Jay and Dr. Humbert and whole administrative team have been unfailingly supportive of Cozy, and for that, we thank you. And you've advocated for our programs and for our staff and for our place here in the district. But we need continued support to deliver our high-quality Family Center programs that really support the NKSD vision. To that end, we really would like a permanent home, and I know Dr. O'Jay is committed to that. We currently live at Davisville Elementary School, or we're tenants at Davisville Elementary School. We'd love to stay there. It's really great for us to have a permanent space, looped and shone all over the district for years and years, so it's nice to have a place where we can put a nail in the wall. Continued recognition of the role, hopefully the role you see as a vital one, that we play in the district and what we do for the district. And really, for you to continue to be our champions and advocate for us, both as a body here and out in the community, to let people know the good work Cozy's doing. Sometimes people say, "Wow, Cozy, I didn't know you were even here." And we've been here almost 20 years, so we've got to stop being the best kept secret in town, so your championing of our cause will really help that. And I'd be happy to take any questions. I have some information that I'd love to share with you on our programs. But are there any questions about our programs, our funding?
Thank you, Barbara. Why don't we just go right down the table like we've done before so that we can make sure that everybody gets an opportunity? So, Mr. Cerisi.
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank Barbara. It's been many years of seeing the presentation and enjoying the relationship and the services, so thank you for what you guys do for the district and the students.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Biscardin.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. I'm just impressed at how many people you touch in a given year. Those numbers were pretty impressive. I never realized the scope of what you guys did.
Thank you. Sometimes we don't realize it until we look at it and go, "Wow, we do a lot."
Mrs. Avanzato?
Yes, I want to add to both of those comments and also want to recognize the competitive grant writing that you do because that is something that you look for, and it's just wonderful that you've been able to do that. Quick question. What is the McKinney-Bento funding kind of hinge on? What are you thinking? You say you're not quite sure whether it'll be able to...
It's a good question. One of the reasons North Kingstown, or the reason North Kingstown qualified for a sub-grant, and I may have said we're only, I think, one of five communities in the state who gets a McKinney-Bento sub-grant, is because families who were living at former crossroads, now Kingstown crossings, met the federal definition of homeless, which is that they lacked a fixed, adequate, and permanent residence. Although they weren't living in a car or on the street the way we might think of homeless, the federal definition of homelessness is quite broad. So families living there met that criteria, which raised our numbers of homeless students in the district. That made us eligible for that funding or more competitive for that funding. Any community can apply for it, but obviously they have a limited amount.
But that has changed based on, can you talk about that?
That's the second half. Yeah, I left that off. Crossroads has changed their status. The Kingstown crossings apartments, because families there, it's my understanding, because they sign a lease, it is now a permanent residence. The unfortunate part of that, it's a wonderful new building, they're beautiful, and it was a long overdue change because I know those buildings were kind of in disrepair. Unfortunately, simply signing a lease has not changed the needs of the families that are coming in, and many of the families that are coming in will still be coming from homeless situations and really relying on the support that we've become so good at providing here through the school department.
I thought I remembered that we were working with our legislators on that. Are we, in terms of definitionally, or is there nothing we can do at this point? Maybe I'm thinking of something else.
It's kind of come to a dead end.
Oh, okay. I knew there was some discussion. That's unfortunate. Two quick, you mentioned the consultant that you're working with, Rhode Island Foundation. That's a grant also, right, the Rhode Island Foundation?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's good.
Yep.
Who's the consultant?
Barbara Jackson.
Oh, yeah. And one last thing, you offer advocates for preschool parents. I don't think I knew that. That's one of the services that Cozy provides.
Through the Door to the District and our NK Connect program, our staff would be working with parents to help them navigate through the system. So I'm not sure if it's advocates in the way that you might be thinking about it, but certainly someone who can advise parents, let them know what's ahead on the road through that process.
Just suggesting, I'm sure CLAC probably is very aware, but I just, you know, reach out to them because that's a great service. Thank you.
Mrs. Clarkin.
Again, I want to thank you for coming out. You did a great presentation, and I found it especially helpful, being a new member to the committee and not really knowing about the Cozy program. It gave me a lot of insights, and I really look forward to learning more about the program as we go along.
Thank you. And I should have extended. You're all welcome, of course, to come over and visit us in our offices at DE, but we run programs Monday through Thursday on various days at both DMS and Quiddneset, our two partner schools. We have playgroups every Thursday morning at DE, so if there's something you'd like to see, sort of a program in action, certainly let me know and I can help identify a time that works for you. We'd love to have you see what it is that we do.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks?
Thank you. I guess, you know, when you're down here at the end of the table, you just pile on. So, but I appreciate too. Not again. Yeah. I did have a question. You know, about the 21C you call it. So are you doing or intend to do longitudinal studies of the cohorts who go through there and track their progress through the district?
Absolutely, and that's part of the reporting that we do to the state is they look at kneecap scores. We submit them to the state and they take them as a whole, so we don't necessarily get a report back just on our students. We could sort of do it pen and paper, but as a Cozy staff, we are really beginning to look at what other results we could substantiate.
I guess that might be an issue to talk about, why the state can't do stuff for us. Maybe we can talk about that more as Dr. Humbert gets there. The other thing, I guess, so, you know, just the term 21st century, so what are things you're finding, you know, when you're doing stuff at that age that might spill over to the larger general population? Are you finding anything that carries over from the work you're doing with a subset population that might carry over broadly or to the larger...
To other schools in the district, do you mean? Certainly, we know our programs are immensely popular with the students, and we would love to be able to expand them to other schools in the district. And the programs really are driven by student demand, if you will, and family demand, whether it's for some fitness opportunities after school, foreign language, what they call STEM, which is science, technology, I think engineering and math.
That's very good.
There's a real focus within 21C on STEM programming because that's really what they consider those 21st century skills. So I think the programs would be very viable in other schools with additional funding to support that.
Yeah, no, I think it'd be great at some point maybe to, you know, look at some of the data in depth that you're getting, not tonight.
Oh, sure. 21C is designed for schools with higher percentages of poverty, so that's why we're able to focus it on those two schools.
Thank you. Thank you.
Be at the end of the wagon here. I don't have a thousand questions, but thank you. I think it takes also special people to work in a field like this, and I understand that, and I congratulate you.
Thank you. We have a great group of people.
Because it does take special people to work with the people that are kind of deprived in our community, in our, everywhere, I guess. With a couple of comments, how many full-time and how many part-time staff do you have?
Right now, I believe just one of our staff is working full-time and the rest, we all sort of cobble together around our children and other family needs, so we're really a very part-time, part-year staff.
So you're just yourself, and then you have part-time staff that volunteer or other type?
No, no, and it's all paid, but for example, our parent educators who deliver the Parents as Teachers program might work 15 hours a week. I myself work about 15 hours a week, so we're really kind of piecemealing sometimes.
I'm also very interested in looking at some of that cohort data if you get it. That'd be very interesting, to see what's happening there because I think that'll be pivotal in terms of allocating any money in case these things dry up, you know, the grants and everything else.
Absolutely.
If you ever have any data, please call, because I'd like to see some of that data.
Absolutely.
Also, I noticed in the chart here that you had a reference to Crossroads and Kingston.
I think it was Crossroads slash Kingstown crossings.
Kingstown?
Right, because the apartments that were Navy Drive now are Kingstown crossings.
One time, there's some work now on some of the Kingston, you know, down there.
Right, no, different, no.
Some people are coming up and supporting these programs.
Oh, no, no.
Some time ago?
No, I was just referring here to Kingstown crossings. I'm sorry, yes.
What about that? How closely aligned, no, don't worry about that question. Now, also, you said you're basically focusing on DMS and Quiddneset children?
Those are our two partner schools under the Cozy name, if you will. That's where we deliver most of our...
And what criteria, they have criteria that kind of focus you, you know, like free reduced lunch, yeah, free and reduced lunch?
I know what you meant. Yes, Quiddneset being our district's Title I school makes them a priority for receiving or being the recipient of this type of funding or where we would deliver this type of funding. And although Davisville Middle School is not at 40% poverty, which is sort of the high watermark, because Quiddneset feeds entirely into the middle school, we're able to substantiate continued funding there because we know the need doesn't drop off once students go into sixth grade.
That link is there, like free or reduced lunch, whatever that...
That is a primary criteria by which we would determine availability.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, and I'll just give you my handouts.
Thank you very much, Barbara. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mudge.
All right, so we have our next presentation is Dr. Michelle Humbert.
While we're making the change here, I just want to thank Mrs. Sweeney for her report and for all the work that she does. As you know, you know, the Cozy and the work that they do, you know, is vital to this district, and with our ever-growing, you know, low-income population, their work is more needed than ever. You know, if there's something that, you know, I would love to be able to explain, it would be these kinds of services. And, you know, especially with their federal funding, you know, not necessarily totally drying up, but it is certainly not increasing, just like everything else. So it makes it so that they always have to be very creative in meeting the needs of the population that they serve. So I really do appreciate that. Thank you very much. I want to, you know, just say very briefly, I'm going to let Dr. Humbert do all of the detailed work, but, you know, I'm very pleased with the results of our fall kneecap scores in reading, math, and writing. You know, we've shown steady gains over the last few years, and that's exactly where you want to be. And we have, you know, certain success stories from different levels, but, you know, it's that commitment to professional development, to get better, to focus our curriculum in such a way that we are addressing the needs of these students on the tests that they need to take, and they need to take these tests to graduate. And that's a long process, and what I'm very pleased about when I see our scores are that in North Kingstown, the scores are going, you know, year by year in the right direction, not necessarily always in huge leaps and bounds, but slow, steady progress, and that's the way you need to be. It shows that you're learning from the results and you're getting better. And so, without any further ado, Dr. Humbert.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. O'Jay. Is it working? Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you all hear me? Great, thank you. So I have a very, very, I'm honored to be able to share the data that I have tonight. As Dr. O'Jay said, we are trending in the right direction, and so it's with pleasure that I share the information with you this evening. One of the things before we get started that I do want to remind everybody about is that the kneecap assessments are only one form of assessment that we use in the schools. Assessments are used for various purposes. This particular assessment, the kneecap state assessment, is a summative assessment. We have other assessments that we use. We have formative assessments, and we have interim assessments, and these all provide information for us, but they have different purposes. So it's important to keep that in mind. This is one yearly test, and it is administered through grades three and eight, and then again at grade 11. This test is soon to be replaced in the school year 14, 15 with the PARC test, and that will be administered yearly. So the ninth and 10th graders, 11th graders and 12th graders will all take, I'm not sure about 12th graders, but yearly, ninth grade and 10th grade will be added. And the other thing to remember as we go along here is that some of the data that I'm going to show you will be summary data at the district level, and then we have other things that will be more trend-like data, so you'll see five years of trends. We'll have some data that's going to compare 2008 with 2012 so that you can see that span. And that's important because data, when it comes to student achievement, can be very incremental, and so those changes from year to year sometimes are difficult to see, but when you see a five-year trend, then you know that things are really taking hold and are having consistent progress. And then some of the information that I am presenting, we have some distinctions. The distinctions that we have come from distinctions that the state has made for certain districts, and that is because there is statistical significance to the scores. Sometimes a score... Sometimes a school might have, actually have higher scores or higher percentages, but it's all based on statistical significance. So it's a little formula that's used and it's helpful to keep that in mind. So for example, if you have, if you had a fourth grade and you had, the previous year was 60% achievement and then it went up to 66% achievement, so you had a 6% gain. To know if that was statistically significant, you'd need to know what the standard error was for both of those scores. And if that, if you took the difference, so you got the 6% and then you took the standard error for each one of those scores, if those added together were more than the 6%, then you would have a statistical significance. That's a simple explanation of it.
Simple formula?
Please.
A simple formula?
Yes, it's simple. Okay, so now to get into the good news here. So here are some of our distinctions. First of all, NK was one of 13 Rhode Island districts that demonstrated statistically significant gains in both reading and math. Some districts only did it in one content area or the other, and this is from 2008 to 2012. That's taking the scores of proficiency at the 2008 school year and comparing them with the scores of proficiency to the 2012. Also, our middle schools and high schools, so all of our secondary level, demonstrated statistically significant gains in reading from 2008 and 2012. Our high school demonstrated statistically significant gains in math from 2008 to 2012. And Quineset Elementary School was cited by the state for 16% gains in math from 2011 to 2012. So we're very pleased to see that occur. All right, but wait, there's more. So we have our writing. We are one of eight districts that demonstrated a positive significant difference from the state average in writing at all three grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school. And all schools performed higher than the state in writing this year. And Forest Park Elementary School was actually 27% higher than the state average for the percentage of students demonstrating writing proficiency. So we were very pleased to see that recognition as well. And also, as many of you know, Fishing Cove, last year when I did the classifications for schools, we had one school that was a school of mourning and that was Fishing Cove. And I'm very, very pleased to say that the gains that they have made this year have been really incredible. So from 2011 to 2012, first of all, there was a 2% gain in reading, but if you look at math and writing, you see very big jumps. You have 10% gain in math and 11% gain in writing. And then looking at their cohort from last year, their fourth grade from last year going into their fifth grade for this year, so the current fifth graders, they showed, and that's basically the same cohort of kids going from fourth to fifth, they showed a 14% gain in reading and a 19% gain in math, just in one year. So that is a big jump for one year. Here's our district summaries. I went back four years on this. You can see reading has been going on an upward trend. We had 82%, 82%, 86%, and 87%. So that was good news. For math, we were, in 2009, we started at 69% per district level performance. So that's all of the, all of our levels, elementary, middle, and high. Went to 71, we stayed at 71 the following year, and this year we jumped up to 75%. So that's a 4% gain. It's good. And writing, 65% to 67, a little bit dipped the next year, 66, and now we're back up to 72%. And we just did some comparisons here between our district-level results and the state, and this is in reading. We continue our positive trend, as I just showed you in the numbers that you saw, but I wanted to show you that comparison to state, the state levels. So you can see that we're at 87% for the district and the state is at 73%. For math, we started at 69% as I said, and now we're at 74% per district level. The state is still at 57% proficiency. So math has been a trouble area for the state of Rhode Island. There's been some gains, but really it's been very challenging. And even with writing, the state is maintaining around 54% averaging there, so from 53, 54, 55%, and we are considerably higher at 72% proficiency. And then this shows you basically the same thing for this year, the district and the state, but this breaks it out at elementary, middle, and high. So you see at the elementary level, we have 77% proficiency. Let me just clarify, proficiency means students that scored a three or a four on the kneecap test.
Out of how many?
Excuse me?
Three or four, out of how many?
It's one, two, three, or four.
The high school is a four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, three is proficient and four is proficient with distinction.
Thank you.
So the elementary, the state level is 59%. And once again, our district proficiency rate is 75. For the middle level, we have 77%. The state level is at 65% proficiency. And for the high school, we are at 65% proficiency and the state is at 50. These are a little bit of analysis done by cohort. So this is taking students, now this is the same group of students, so taking students that right now are our current seventh graders and tracing them back to when they were in fourth grade. So in fourth grade, they were scoring 79% proficient. Then they went up to 82%, and this is in reading, excuse me. And then they shot up to 88% and they've been able to maintain that at 88%. For our grade eight students, they were at 77% back when they were in fifth grade, took a little dip to 76, shot up 10 percentage points, so they went up to 86. And you could say, whoa, that's a spike, you know, probably they can't maintain that, but we were glad to see that they actually went up a point. And for our high school reading, this is different cohorts of students because we can't trace them from ninth grade and 10th grades. We can't do a three-year trend, not that type of analysis because the ninth graders and 10th graders don't take the kneecap test. So here you have different cohorts of students. So these are the 11th graders, the students that were 11th graders in 2009, they were at 85% proficiency. Then you have the 11th graders in 2010, they went up two points to 87%. Then last year, they went up to 92% and we were all really impressed with that. Could they ever get any higher than that? That's pretty good, especially at the high school level. And then they went up to 93% this year, so we were very pleased with that. Our math trends, they're holding steady. They're not as impressive as the reading trends, however, we wanted to present everything so that you would get a full picture. So we have, this math trend cohort analysis is showing our fifth graders from when they were third graders, and they are holding at 83%. And for math, actually, that's, it's pretty good considering the challenges in the math testing. And then we have an eighth-grade cohort analysis, so we started at 77% three years ago. They went down to 73 and they've come back up. Not quite to the original, but they did come back up. And here we have our high school math. We have a 7% gain from last year. And if you look at the six-year trend going all the way back to 2007, you'll actually see we have an 11% gain at the high school level. And the state proficiency level is only 34%. And this year, they did some analysis in the state guide that came out. All of this, by the way, is available on the RIDE website. If you go to instruction and then click on assessment over on the left and then click on reports, you'll see all of the information, the breakdown in many areas. It's about a 62-page report plus some appendices. It's very interesting. This year, they gave information on subgroup performance. And so we have a look at our low-income students and a look at our IEP students. And I'm very happy to say that we have some significant gains from last year to this year. So if you follow for reading, you'll see that our low-income students had 65% proficiency last year and this year went up to 67% proficiency. And for our IEP students, we had 49% proficiency, went up to 54% proficiency. So we realized a 5% gain there. And then for math, we also had gains. For our low-income, we had a 5% gain and for our IEP students, a 9% gain. And getting near the end here, we had, I wanted to just put this grade three results here. We had reading proficiency at grade three at 84% and our math proficiency at also 84%. And those are very, very good scores to start with in third grade. So our primary grades are really doing some work and, you know, it starts with the Cozy program, you know, getting those kids when they're really young and getting them the services and interventions that they need. And then we have a very strong program, so even though we have only the half-time kindergarten, we have some strong programs through that. And so first grade, kind of first grade and second grade, also we have transitioned at least kindergarten in first grade to the Common Core. We've got some rigorous instruction going on there. And so the expectations have been set very high and our third grade scores seem to reflect that. And this is in contrast to what's happening in the state because in state, at the state level, the third grade actually went down in the reading proficiency. So like sometimes you could look at a score like this and say, well, you know, maybe everybody in third grade did well this year around the state. That's not the case. So this is a good indicator for us and of course we'll combine it with other indicators and see what happens. Okay, so here we have the, what is happening at the high school level. As you know, this, the juniors this year are the first cohort of students that have the new regulations for graduation. They are the class of 2014. And so in order to receive a diploma, they have to achieve at least a two, a minimum of a two on both the math and the reading assessments for kneecap. And so we are always very interested in this number because, you know, those students are students that will need extra interventions. They get a chance to retake the test next year if they have a one, and so we'll be providing support for them. So if you look at the numbers that are there, in 2011, we had just 2% of our students in reading, so that's seven students that had a one on the kneecap. And so they needed to, you know, but that was last year, so they didn't, they weren't under the requirement. This year, we have eight students, still at 2%, and those students will need to demonstrate progress towards proficiency. So when they take, they have an opportunity to take the kneecap again in the 12th grade in the fall and they have, there's a chart that has numbers and that indicates from where the score was that they had, that score, they demonstrate growth towards proficiency. So if they don't get, like if they don't get the two, but they show enough growth towards it, then they will qualify if they hit that, if they hit the score that's designated for where they started. And for math, last year we had 74 students that received a one. And this year, that has come down to 59. So those students, we have a plan for them. And I know Dr. Kenworthy is speaking tomorrow night on his PTO about all of the options and the paths for these students. And I included, I included with the PowerPoint tonight, this piece, the yellow and green one, and that shows you, I think, a nice, simple graphic of what options there are for students who are receiving a one. So if you follow the green, they're good to go. The yellow gives them the options of, you can think of it as caution. And then on the next slide, which I think is our last one, we have the graduation rates and the state breaks out the graduation rates in four years, five years, and six years. And there's a percentage for each one of those. Last year, I think we were at 88% for the four-year and we went up to 89% for our graduation rate. And to explain the difference between the four-year graduation and the five-year and the six-year, I included the explanation that's behind this one so that you can read it through. It's a little, a little complex to understand how they calculate that. And that's it. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Dr. Humbert. Why don't we go down the table, though this time we will start from your end, Mr. Mudge, since we usually start from up here. So I will let you be the first person to ask questions.
Could you articulate on that simple formula for me? You know what, it would be nice to see, and I guess we don't have the data and, you know, trace the students or cohorts like from first grade, you know, right up through the 12th grade, and what information we have in terms of, you know, that class and how it's doing to see if it goes from the 10th grade, they drop down, and the 11th grade, they go up to 12th grade, to see if, you know, some of these, what some of the causes may be, is it the school environment, or something like that, you know, I know. I mean, I just, there's so much information here and you're pretty hard to really nail down what, like you say, some of these dips were. Now, what kind of work do you do to try to determine what caused the, you know, the blips?
Right, well, one thing, the first thing I want to say about that is that we only start these tests in third grade. So we only have data in, actually, the kneecap's been administered for eight times at this point at the third to eighth grade level and six times at the high school level. So we have data as far as that. And we have tools that measure progress, the people who create the kneecap test and do the scoring. We have tools that help us to do some of the longitudinal studies. So that's where some of this data has come from. And then we're keeping our own spreadsheets of each cohort as it's progressing. And that's where the cohort studies that I showed you came from.
And what, when you have that data, like when you said, you know, we saw a couple of blips in here, I figured we're cheating there on. What do we do, what do you do to try to look at that to see what might have caused that particular blip?
Well, I think what, one thing that I did want to share with you is that what happens now, this is one level of information that I've shared with you, but what happens is at the school level, they take it down to another green level of this data. So they are actually looking at several pieces. The subgroups, it's broken down into eight different areas that they will look at. So they'll look at their special ed population, for example. They can look at their ELL population, they can look at gender. So they can see all of those things. They also look at different ethnic groups to see, you know, what, how they're performing. And so they look at all of that. In addition to that, they can also look at, do an item analysis. So we have the actual, they release certain items from the test and you can see what each, how each student answered each test. So if you see a particular, on a particular item, if you see a student, several students not answering with the correct item, they'll show you what they have chosen as an answer. And then you can look at that test item and say, okay, well, a lot of kids, you know, chose this particular answer. And then you can say, well, what's going on here? Is it something that we missed in our instruction? Was it how the question was worded? You know, why was that such a distractor for kids?
It would be nice to get back some input on what these mean. But just one more question, with respect to this, if I can remember it. With respect to the general population, you mentioned you've got the, you know, the LEP or, you know, kids on IEP and these different categories and... IEP, and these different categories, and free reduced lunches and so forth. Can we, do we have data, and how far back would it go, that shows us that, you know, that, for better, lack of a better word, a Joe average student, you know, that isn't disabled, or isn't challenged, mentally challenged, or anything else, okay? And look at that cohort and say, you know, "All these kids that don't have these issues, this is how they perform." And so we could go to another community and look at Barrington, or South Kingston, or Providence, like, which you'd probably catch classical, and see what, what these, our averages are compared to that particular grouping of people.
Well, when, when we did, I don't know if you remember the PowerPoint that I did in the spring last year, where we did the classifications, they, a lot of, we're accountable for the gaps of those students compared to our regular population. So there is definitely gap analysis done. And so you're responsible, you have a, what they call a reference group within your own school, and you have, you're accountable to closing the gap between those students that may have disabilities or are in those categories.
Do you do any work to try to look at other districts and see how these particular, you know, gaps relate to each other?
Well, this, these, they do it for each school. Each school is, is held accountable for its own, for its own students.
But do we do any assessment ourselves to look at South Kingston, this is how these people are doing compared to us? I mean...
Well, Dr. O'Jay and I did. We looked at the, we looked at the schools to see where we were rating with everybody else.
It'd be nice to see some of that, if, maybe you have it, I don't know. It would be nice to see some of that information.
If I could jump into the conversation, a couple of points. Yes, we do. You know, I mean, we, we do a lot of professional development with other districts, for instance. So we learn from them, and they learn from us. And, and, you know, it's just because they're going, they're taking the same test, they're going, have the same curriculum demands that we do. So, you know, we do look at other districts, particularly if they have similar demographics to, to us. And, and also, you know, Dr. Hubbard and I were involved just this past week in a couple of situations where we sat down with, at Forest Park, for instance, kindergarten and first grade. And they don't have state test scores, but they have assessment results of their own. Fanta-Simpinell reading series, Ames Web programs that they use to measure, you know, math and, and reading, even at those, those levels. And they can identify by the student, you know, and they have data boards. Here, here are the students that are, that are at grade level and where they need to be, and here are the ones that are below. And so there's, there's a listing, and you can see from quarter to quarter, you know, how many, how many fewer kids are in that low category and moving up by the student. And they review those results in detail with their fellow teachers at that grade level and their principal. And in this occasion, we were able to sit in. And it was remarkable to see, you know, that level of data. So, so we have it. And then you can see the, the teachers at the next level, you know, at the first grade, looking at the kindergarten and saying, you know, things like, "That's remarkable." Even some of our first graders aren't at that level yet. You know, those kinds of things. So they see the kids coming to them. And that's the kind of, that, that close-to-the-student analysis. I mean, we can do this kind of large-by-the-district type of thing. But when you can get the teachers to together, look at their particular students in their rooms, and, and use Kneecap scores, and use Fanta-Simpinell, and Ames Web, and NWEA, all these programs that we have to say, to say, "Are our kids learning what they need to learn? Are they at grade level?" Those kinds of things. That's where it's remarkable.
Yeah. The reason I asked the question, Dr. O'Jay, is as you recall, a couple of years ago, we talked about this. And I did kind of my own little study on the charter schools, a couple of charter schools versus, you know, our district. And I found out that most of our schools were as good as, if not better than the charter schools that some of our students were going to, which was, you know, very interesting to me, to say the least.
Another thing that's coming, coming up, and I know Mr. Jones has expressed an interest in this, is the growth model. And we do have, I'm going to be doing a presentation on the growth model. And that will show, that does a comparison of, you can do all the middle schools, you can do all the elementary schools, and you can see, you can see the growth. You can filter it out for various populations. So that would be a fascinating tool to use.
Well, you know my position at charter schools, and the reason I say that, Dr. O'Jay, is because, you know, I don't think we had, we had enough exposure, I think, back then. And I don't know if we've done it, I just did it, I think, two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight or something. And, you know, we should be touting our school system, because, you know, we were equal to, or better than the, the charter schools, in my opinion. One, one last question. What's the PARC test?
The, the PARC test is the, there's two tests. The, half of the United States is going to be using the PARC. It's going to replace, it's for state testing, it's going to replace the Kneecap. And fifty percent of the other states are using the Smarter Balance, I think it's called. Oh, no, that's the...
That's the Butter.
I can't think of the name of it right now. But, but anyway, those, those are the tests that the whole state, the whole country is going to be using.
But they're two different tests, and they're taken for the country?
They are two, yep, yep. The state said...
I don't know why they would have one almost national curriculum, but two different tests. About half the states take one, half the states take the other. Go figure.
Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. And I kind of want to start off by, by letting the committee know and, and the public here that on Friday, when probably both of us should have been worried about, about other stuff and at work, that Dr. Hubbard took probably about, I don't know, thirty, forty minutes to have a very interesting conversation, I guess, if you're into data, like, like we are, about not only the results, but, but cohort analysis and, and other stuff related to this. So I really appreciate the time that you took on Friday to go over some of this. And part of my discussion is, I think it's incredibly important for us as a committee, you know, to use some of these, these tools and assessments to really get at, you know, what are really educationally effective practices. So when it comes to resourcing those, you know, we know the things that are really adding value and the things that, that aren't. And clearly, to tie other forms of, of resourcing to those practices that, that are demonstrating, you know, effective learning and other educationally enriching experiences for, for our kids. So, so I just want to let everyone know, I really appreciate Dr. Hubbard taking the time to do that. On the, the graduation rate, not, not to dive into too much, but for the adjusted cohort measure, I kind of want to make it, you know, clear, or at least get an explanation of, students that enter in the ninth grade as a cohort, what are these specific adjustments they make? Meaning specifically, if a student just leaves in like tenth grade to go to a private school, are they still counted in our cohort thing? You know, what, what students get adjusted out, for what reasons?
My understanding is it's the students that started in, in ninth grade and then stayed through for the four years. Dr. Kenworthy, is that, am I correct in that? The students, the students that stay, for the four-year cohort, it's the students that stay, that started in ninth grade and finish at twelfth grade. They don't count kids who leave to go elsewhere.
As long as they register in another school.
As long as they register in another school district, what, what happens to them?
They become part of that.
They become part of that school district's graduation rate.
Right. And I guess conversely, same for us. And the reason I ask that question, I know the federal cohorts, when you, when you look at, at, at higher education thing, you know, students who leave your, your system still get counted against your cohort, even though you have no control once they leave whether they end up graduating or not. So I, I just think it's important to understand that, because to some extent, you know, your, it would drive ultimately, you know, obviously, people would say, "Why don't we have a hundred percent?" But I mean, some of those, those factors that could account for that, potentially, some students who leave and get lost in the, the data system, but, you know, eventually might, might succeed elsewhere, you know, count against us in that aspect. So, so I just wanted to sort of clarify that. I'm glad you answered the question on item analysis, because that's one of the questions I had. I guess one of my questions might be, just without diving into too much detail, is, you know, do you see, is there any sort of major one that, that sort of popped out across the district of, you know, this is an area that seems to be problematic, at least this year, you know, for, for students?
Well, but now that we, now that we're shifting to the Common Core, we're finding some areas, you know, because we're, we're creating more emphasis on going deeper at certain levels, so that students really come to a mastery level and they're fluent at, at certain, so that's, that's the major drive that, now, that we're noticing. And for kids to really understand from a conceptual point, conceptually, what a number sense means in the primary grades, and, and what fractions mean when they get to the intermediate grades. So that's what we're focusing on right now. I know when I was principal at, at a middle school, we did a lot of item analysis, and various things would come up. Some of it would be vocabulary, you know, words that we used, that we weren't using when, especially for teaching math, you know, people wouldn't understand of, just, for example, like "some," you know, maybe people were using other things instead of the, instead of using that terminology. I mean, that's an easy one, that wouldn't be one for middle level. But it was, that's what I saw surface. And we also had some things that we noticed we weren't covering at, at certain grade levels, or we didn't spend enough time covering that. Or, or people were just confused, the kids were confused. When Dr. O'Jay and I were, have been going to the data meetings, there are some things that are coming up with that, that, that people are discovering by looking at test questions, too, on the other assessments that Dr. O'Jay was talking about. And some of that has been, like, with the primary grades, it's been grouping, which we know in math, as, from our generation, that it's more like borrowing. And so we're looking at what kids are doing, and some kids, top number to bottom number, how they're, how they're working their addition and subtraction that way. Also noticing whether the, the math examples are written out vertically, or whether they're written out horizontally. You know, kids tend to gravitate and find those forms visually, maybe easier to answer. So there's a, there's a lot of things that come up, depending on what it is. But there's multiple, multiple areas that are covered, so.
And, yeah, I, we could spend hours, so I don't want to take up more time with the other committees' time. I would just say, we had the discussion about, and you mentioned it, about gender effects. And so, you know, I'm hoping at some point, you know, I obviously just got the data last week, and, you know, we're, we're asking to give us a presentation. It's not a lot of time to, to drill down. So I'm hoping at some point, maybe come back and look at some of these subgroups like gender. I know clearly, based on the need for graduation requirements, we have to focus on those students who are not proficient. I'm always just concerned that we don't forget the trend in our Level fours, that those who show proficient with distinction, that we're able to keep challenging them and keep, you know, building that level of, of Level four proficiency. Obviously, with the test going away, this has sort of limited use into the future. But, but I'm also, you know, as we move to the PARC test and can do year-to-year analysis, that, that we sort of set in place methodologies going forward that can really drill down and, and look at some of these, and that we're able to not only, you know, bring the bottom up, but, but keep challenging the highest levels, too. So...
Anyway, it was very interesting. Mr. Jones asked me to do a test takers analysis, so looking at the actual kids that we had in eighth grade, and then comparing that to the kids who actually we tested in eleventh grade. And we found some things that were surprising in those results, you know, because we always say that, you know, we lose the cream of the crop from eighth grade going to private schools. And we found actually that there were high, high-performance levels in the students that we retained. So that was very encouraging. And we also found some surprises with the gender analysis, as, as Mr. Jones just said.
So, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mrs. Clarkin?
Thank you for your presentation. It's nice to see positive trends in our proficiency rates. The, the only comment I have is in, you know, the district reading and the district writing, we've increased, you know, over the years, where district math has been kind of flat with a little spike this past year, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve. And I guess one question I would have is, can we pinpoint, is it a matter of a specific grade, or math topic, or something that keeps that score from not increasing better overall?
Well, you know, this, as you could see from, from the results, that this, the state has a real low performance in math, too. So, so we're not alone with this. So everybody's trending low in math, and growing in reading and writing. And, and so we, we always see a big drop when we go to the high school level in, in our math performance compared to the eighth grade and below. And so that was one of the reasons Mr. Jones and I looked at the, at the scores to see, are we, is it, can we really attribute it to the kids that are leaving? Are we losing that many of our high performers? And I really don't think that's the case, after, after looking at at least this one year of data that we looked, you know, that he encouraged me to look at. So I wouldn't say that that's all the case. I think a lot of it is the, the curriculum and what's tested, because we don't have that ninth grade and tenth grade to test in. And then all of a sudden, in grade eleven, the kids are tested on all of the material from the various, the various strands in course content. So I think that's one of the problems. We see that happen in science, too, because there's a lot of recall over the grade span, you know, when you have like from a fifth grade to eighth grade span. So, so I think that, I think that, in my opinion, that that has a lot to do with what we're seeing with the, with the scores. So it'll be interesting to see what happens when we have the yearly, yearly test.
Yes, that, that'll really show us something.
We, we do anticipate an implementation dip, I just want to let you know. So if things, we'll see how things go. Right now, we'll, we'll ride this wave if it's, if it feels good.
Mrs. Amizaro?
Yes, thank you very much, Michelle.
You're welcome.
And now it's time to learn it all over again with a new test, right? Just when we figured out how to analyze this one. I just think that the data is, is very exciting, and it's very good news for North Kingston. For those who say that North Kingston schools are in decline, they are obviously not. And I think, you know, steady gains in every area, it looks like. And, and even though math is gaining as well, it's a little slower, as Ms. Clarkin pointed out, but it still looks like overall, in the high school anyway, eleven percent gain over six years. That's, that's a really good trend. That's quite a bit.
In our, our third grade is at eighty-four percent.
Which is really good. Wait till we get those kids up, and they'll be... But, so I just want to say, overall, it's just wonderful. And I think that the data reflects the priorities of the administration and all, the team that has been put together here to work on these things, and how, and a lot of hard work. And I know, you know, our superintendent was in your position previously, in charge of these kinds of things. I also want to say, I think it reflects something that, you know, this committee took seriously when we were told by Dr. Thornton, when he was superintendent, that, you know, the high school was in trouble. And we were not keeping up with all of these requirements we had in order to get to the point that we're at now, where we can do what Mr. Jones was talking about, analyzing the data properly, so that you can use it to make decisions going forward where the holes are. None of it was being done. And we were told, you know, directly by the superintendent, the school committee was told, that we have a big problem. And so I have to give some credit to the committee at that time for taking the actions that they did to get us where we are today. And you can see from this information over the past four years. And, and that, that credit, too, would belong to Dr. Kenworthy and his group at the high school. They've worked really hard as well.
I have to say that we have a strong leadership team at the administrative level. We have very strong principals. And, you know, you, you need that leadership, and you need that stability. And we've had, we've had that stable leadership. So that's a big help. And then, and of course, the teachers are extremely hardworking, very open to, to data analysis. We have data teams going on in all of the schools, which is a race-to-the-top initiative. But in addition to that, too, the school committee has invested in resources. You know, we have reading specialists, one at each elementary school, through your approval. And that has really strengthened our reading program. We only have one math coach at the elementary level, and, you know, she's trying to service five schools, as opposed to having our, our reading specialist, one in each school. You know, and you need that, you need that because of literacy being, you know, primary to everything else we do. So then, you know, you need the resources. And, and I know we realize that, but...
Well, I neglected to mention the teachers, but it does show, and all the work shows. And I want to thank everybody involved. This is really great. Thank you.
Mr. Bussgarden?
Thank you, Ms. Page. I just, I think the results are outstanding. And I said it earlier before, we were allowed to make it public, but you guys need to be commended. I think you did a wonderful job. And actually, I'm glad that, Dr. Hubbard, you're there, because I'm not so sure that your predecessor would have been able to pull this off, of course, as well.
The results of two, three years ago, buddy boy.
No, I think you all, I hope you all take a whole lot of pride in what you've presented to us today, because it's, it's nice to see, you know, hard work pay off, really is.
Mr. Cerisi?
A very brief thank you, Dr. Humbert, and for the presentation, and definitely numbers trending upward, there's always a positive thing. And, you know, just recognize, as I said at our last meeting, I believe we have some of the best administrators and principals in the state, and recognize their contributions and their work. And I think, as Mrs. Avanzato mentioned, the changes that have been made over the past several years in leadership, I think we're seeing the direct results of those changes now. And also, not forgetting most importantly, the teachers, who are the ones on the front line, who are implementing these, these changes and these standards every day in the classroom.
Well, I mean, it is, having sat on this committee since 2006, it's always good to be able to say, look how much our scores have improved. And that was very nice, in the way that you demonstrated your packet here of seeing that score from, some of the scores from 2009, it was great to see the three-year trends, the four-year trends, because that's something that we haven't had, because we haven't had the length of time. So those were very interesting to see, it was great to see that we're going upward. And I thank you, I thank the rest of the administration, our principals, I thank our teachers. I know that part of it is, because we have said, we want to invest in our after-school programs, we've made a real commitment to say, what are we doing after school to help kids who haven't gotten it during the regular time? And having seen some of the SolCon videos and those sort of things, and they talk about, so what are you doing with kids when they're not in, you know, when they're not in the regular classroom? And I know that we've been working hard with our after-school programs to say to kids, okay, if you're not getting it, come back in, let's make sure you get it. And so I think this is kind of a testament, that the money that we have invested has been paying off in the scores, that we are progressing. And so I thank you for putting this together, and for the time you've taken.
You're very welcome. And just one other thing, tomorrow we'll be putting two links on our website, so if you want to, these are all open to the public now, the, all of the districts. So you can go in and see the NCEP results, and of course, you can go to the RIDE website, as I said before, and all of those guides are there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. So, I know our presentations were lengthy, but at the same, or actually, they were short, our questions were longer. But I appreciate the committee making sure that we were updated on these, this information. Dr. O'Jay, that brings us to superintendent's report.
I just want to thank Dr. Humbert for her report, and, you know, as we kind of segue into a budget discussion, you know, I just want to point out some things that I'm kind of reflecting on as we hear these impressive results. You know, we made a commitment in this district, back when Dr. Thornton came on, to look at data very closely, and do a lot of common assessments, and work with that. And that has helped. We've made an effort to put resources toward working with students who don't get it right away, and need that extra help somehow. We've also put a lot of resources, and this gets to Mr. Jones' point, about those students who are getting the 4s. I mean, we have an impressive array of AP coursework and honors coursework at the high school. That's where the 4s go, for their coursework. And that's, that's an internationally benchmarked curriculum, that's as good as it gets. Last year, we were the only school in the state of Rhode Island to be an AP honor roll school, for the impressive gains in the number of students that are taking an AP curriculum at North Kingstown High School. If your kids are taking that curriculum, the people who measure these things know that your curriculum is as good as anyone in the, in the world, because if you're taking an AP course in North Kingstown, or in Sweden, or in California, it's the same test. So if your kids are doing well on that, they know your, your kids are doing as well as anywhere in the world. So it's that kind of a commitment, you know, the after-school help, the after-school programming that keeps kids engaged, the help for kids who aren't getting it, and the help for kids who are getting it and need to be challenged even further. Those are the things that make a difference, and make those scores go up. And we're very fortunate, North Kingstown, to have the whole package. And, you know, that's, that's what I have my eyes on, when I start to look at, you know, budgets, and worrying about, you know, what's, what's going to happen with, you know, the numbers and that sort of thing. That's what it translates to for me. So that's my brief superintendent's report tonight.
Thank you. Lorraine, that brings us to the executive session. Do I have a vote to seal the executive session, or do I have, not a vote, do I have a motion to seal the executive session minutes from February 12, 2013? Second. So I have a motion and a second. All those who favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Lorraine, can we have a disclosure of executive session votes?
Just one vote was taken, all members were present at tonight's executive session. Motion made by John Biscardan to adjourn, seconded by Linda Avanzato, and the motion passed 7-0. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. I will say that I know that, as per our conversation in executive session, I believe that the committee is seeking that they would like to exempt D9. So I'll go ahead and say that we will exempt that for now. Are there any other exemptions for the consent agenda? Mr. Cerisi?
I don't have an exemption at this time. If there are no further exemptions, I will offer a motion to approve the non-exempt items.
I'll second that, if there are no other exemptions. Great, seeing no further exemptions, all those in favor of approving the executive, I mean, I'm sorry, the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, that brings us to the 2013-2014 school budget.
We have an exemption.
I'm sorry, well, yes, we do have the exemption. Why don't we have further exemption, discussion? Yeah, do I have a motion to, to table that until we have, are we going back into executive session?
Yes.
Okay, so table that until we go into executive session. Motion to table?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, so a motion to table D9, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm sorry, now that brings us to the 2013-2014 school budget. Dr. O'Jay?
Yes, you have before you tonight, members of the committee, two different spreadsheets that I have provided for you. One contains the majority of the cuts that you've already made to our budget, to get us to a four, or what I am proposing, as a 4% increase in town funding, that we would send as a proposal to the town council. The only remaining item, that's still a suggestion, is to eliminate one bus that would not have an impact on start times. And the other document that you have in front of you is a listing of the kinds of cuts that would become necessary, should our funding level go below 4%. The town has asked us to put together a 2% budget and a zero budget. And what I've tried to include are the kinds of reductions that would need to be made. And I'm not going to go through the entire list, they contain just about every place we could find, for all kinds of supplies. There would be a further reduction in, in teaching, particularly at the high school. We would probably, we would definitely be looking, and this may need to happen even with a 4% budget, of a reduction in the number of foreign languages that we teach. Our vehicle maintenance, maintenance of our buildings would suffer, building improvements. The coordinators that we have to keep up our webpages in good shape would go away. Our textbook curriculum would decrease by a third. And all of that that I just described hardly even gets us to about a percent, and we're talking about reducing by another 4%. The next round of the kinds of things that would need to happen would be things that we hold near and dear to our heart in this district, and those would be things like our music program, our fifth grade music program would suffer significantly. Our after-school activities, the clubs, those things are not mandated, they're not required by law. We all know that they are perfectly within the character of this town, it is what the people in this town want to have as part of their high school. And, and quite frankly, it's, it's that other element that makes those test scores so high. Students who are engaged, that really love their school, and want to show up every day because of that sports team, or because of that club, or because of the drama, or because of the music that they play. It's, it's clear that, for instance, students who get involved in music tend to do better overall academically. Those things have a connection. Those kids who get involved in sports do better, and you can even see data that shows that in the season that an athlete plays his or her sport, that their grades seem to go better in that season. You would think they're so busy that the grades would suffer, it's just the opposite. They're so engaged that the grades improve. So those things matter, but they're not mandatory items. And those would be the only things that we'd have left to choose from, because in the last few years, we've done a lot of cutting to the areas that we've had discretion over, and we're running out. And so I'm really worried about, you know, those kinds of cuts. We'd even get to a point where, right now, we have a nurse at every school. We'd have to cut that back a little bit, and now schools need to share nurses. Now you're starting to get into safety issues, and that would concern me. Even our NEASC accreditation, next year is a NEASC visitation year for our high school. And for me, it's hard to imagine that we would have an accredited high school from NEASC without all of these other items. So that would probably be the last thing that we would need to cut. And, you know, because it would, it's almost $60,000 to pay for, you know, the budget for a visitation year, and if we're not going to get the results, why bother to go through the process and throw away $60,000? So, you know, I'm very concerned about this. Now, all, everything that I've just described to you, the complete elimination of our entire sports program and after-school music program included, would only get us to about a 1.3 budget, not a zero budget. And it would require us to find another $584,000 to cut, and I'm not even sure where to go for that. You know, are we talking about having one principal for two schools? Are we talking about, you know, those kinds of dramatic, they seem insane kinds of cuts? Just absurd kinds of things, that we cannot imagine our schools with? That's where we are at this point. The, the money in a district budget is in wages and in benefits. I think our district has done a very good job of addressing those kinds of issues in recent years, even to the point of outsourcing in some cases, and the point of major co-pays for health insurance, so on and so forth, zeros for employees, all of those things have come into play. And we will continue to strive for those kinds of things, but we start to run out of options. And, and that is also kind of linked, right now, to our negotiations with our teachers. So, you know, so some of those things, we cannot necessarily simply just plug in tonight. So, you know, that's the message I have for you tonight, and I'm hoping that you will approve that, the $70,000 cut of the bus, and approve that, this spreadsheet that I've given you with the cuts that would be necessary to get lower than 4%, would be something that we would send as a message to the town council, per their request.
Mrs. Avanzato?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the remaining cut that superintendent just referred to, of the bus.
With the $70,000 for the bus, you're saying then?
That's what I'm saying, yep.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there discussion? Mrs. Avanzato?
I just want a little bit of information on it, I know this item was tabled at the last meeting, for some more information. I see it says on our sheet, no impact to start times?
Correct. It's actually a contract that would have been coming forward for, that's going to expire June 30th, that Mr. Horan will endeavor to eliminate.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, I would always turn my head to the right, so if anybody over here is looking to speak, and I don't, I notice you, I realized after we had done the two presentations that I never looked to the right, if, if either of you wanted to say anything, so I apologize. So just like, you know, clear your throat, tap on something, so if I need to turn to the right at any point. All right, so seeing no further, oh, Mr. Biscardan?
I'm just, I'm not familiar with the, the way the bus schedules work. How can we eliminate a bus and not affect start times?
Because the route will be absorbed into all of the other, and rerouted into all of the other buses. It's going to have to be a rerouting of all of the other buses to absorb the stops where necessary.
So it won't impact start times, but it could impact certain pickup times?
Correct. And that could, that could change every year though, Mr. Biscardan. You know, you could have a variance in a pickup time every year, depending on how things have to be routed, so that's not, that's not out of the ordinary.
I think that was one of the recommendations in our bus, our transportation audit, was that they thought that we could, we could eliminate another bus without coming forward with other issues of, around the start times. All right, seeing that there are no one else who is requesting to speak, Lorraine, why don't we take a roll call vote? Linda Avanzato?
Yes.
John Biscardan?
No.
Larry Cerisi?
Yes.
Carol Clarkin?
Yes.
Robert Jones?
Yes.
William Mudge?
Go.
Kimberly Page?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-2, thank you. All right, so that gets us to the 4% mark. Mr. Cerisi?
I know we still have much discussion to have, and I actually have a few comments and a few questions regarding the budget, but at this time, I'd just like to, before we enter into a discussion that gets off topic, I'd like to put a motion on the table at this time to approve the superintendent's proposed budget of $59,137,891.
Second. Mr. Cerisi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of comments I'd like to make.
Where'd you get that?
Okay, it's on the, it's on, I believe, the second page in our budget book.
Oh, you're not going, okay, you're not working off, I thought you were looking here.
That number that I stated represents what the budget request would be after the 500 and...
Eighty-four?
Yeah, after that, after the...
Cuts.
The cuts that we made, the 500, I'm sorry, Mrs. King, it was... Right, so that number that I just put forward in the motion represents what our request would be after the 550 some odd dollars of cuts that we've just approved. And just to make some comments, I'm glad to see on our paperwork that we've been, a part of the package that we've received tonight, there's kind of a little key in the top-left corner there, that represents additional cuts that will need to be made by the school committee, should they not receive the requested increase amount. To just to give you an idea of the dollar amount, I think as I stated, at our last school committee meeting, for every 1% lower than 4%, should the committee receive, it's an additional $440,000 of cuts that the committee will have to make. Example, you know, like I said, if you receive a 2% increase rather than a 4% increase, you're looking at an additional $885,000 in additional reductions the school committee will have to make to the budget. So I think we need to be cognizant of that, and understanding of that, and potentially prepared for those things. Secondly, I'd like to point out, and you know what, this isn't to ruffle any feathers, so please, I don't want to be mistaken or misunderstood. You know, the school committee and the administration took a heck of a lot of... You know, the school committee and the administration took a heck of a lot of, a heck of a lot of grief for the move that we made in outsourcing the custodial services. And there was all kinds of wild accusations as to why the school committee's doing this, why is the superintendent recommending this? Well, fact of the matter is, things like that is not something that we wake up and decide that we want to do someday or that we enjoy doing. And I think I can speak for all of my colleagues, certainly, those are tough decisions to make and tough votes to take. It's not enjoyable in the least bit. But I just want to bring to your attention, we just made $550,000 of reductions to get to a request of a 4% increase. Had the administration and had the school committee not taken the steps to outsource the custodians, we would have been looking at an additional approximately $600,000 on top of that $550,000 of cuts, just to get to a 4% requested increase. So you would have been looking at $1.1 million of reductions to get to a requested 4% increase. So, you know, for the people out there who think that was done as just a fun exercise that we all enjoyed, I just want to bring that to your attention. It was not fun, it was not enjoyable, but our core mission here is education, and that's what I support, and that's the core mission that we need to protect when we're making these reductions. And I'd much rather be, you know, making those reductions, although they're not enjoyable, than further reducing programs, programs and services for students. Lastly, I want to cover the request that I made at our last meeting, and thank the superintendent and Mrs. King for following through on that request, and sending correspondence over to the town manager and requesting his assistance and his guidance, and certainly not required, as I said, but making a recommendation of what he would like to see the school department put forward on a state aid estimate. So I believe we all have that, a copy of that correspondence in front of us, and my intent there was to make sure that we're all looking at the same number, and we all understand the rationale behind that number. And that there's not accusations made, you know, that state aid number seems to be an issue every time when we come to vote on the final budget number. So there's not accusations made that the school department underestimated it, or overestimated it, or the town council underestimated it, or overestimated. My intention was to have some clear lines of communications and make sure we're all looking at the same number, and we all understand the rationale of why we're looking at that number. So, thank you, Dr. Ogier and Mrs. King, and to the town manager, Mr. Embry, for sending something over in writing, so we all have a clear understanding of that, and it's not open for a conspiracy theory when we come to vote on these final budgets. So, thank you.
Mr. Mudge.
Yes. You know, I think voting on these cuts today are quite premature. Unfortunately, the scoop, the budget committee had another meeting, and we're going to go over a lot of these things, I think, and come back with some recommendations. I think our next meeting is on Friday. With respect to that, I'd like to get the record clear, okay? And I have the data to show this, and we, let's stick with data. The fact of the matter is, okay, the contract that was signed for the custodial staff, and this is all documented, okay? The savings were just about as equal to what the union was going to give up. So to suggest that the outsourcing, okay, saved us money, and the fact, the fact of the matter is that, in fact, the custodial contract was giving up an equal amount, almost the same, we need to verify. Mr. Cerisi, you have a different opinion than I do, and so forth. We can look at the numbers, and we can satisfy those numbers, okay? So, in fact, that's record. Okay, in terms of the, in terms of the state aid and what the town manager says, I don't really care, because the bottom line is, we have a budget here. This has nothing to do with revenue and where the money comes from. If the town, I mean, the superintendent's budget's been submitted here, if the town council wants to change the numbers down and not put down the state aid that was recommended, okay, by the governor at his budget, then all we simply do is get more money from the taxpayers. So the town council can change the numbers around. It has nothing to do with this budget at all, nothing. Because this is a budget of, what's the number, $59 million, whatever we have, okay? How they get the money is immaterial. So when we look at that, if the council wants to throw them out with that, they can do what they want to, okay? So they'll have to explain to the taxpayers why they want an extra $166,000, okay? Now, with respect to this, you know, again, I say this is premature, because, you know, we have been working and trying to do some things, and Mr. Chairman, I hope I'm not jumping in here, but I did want to say that one of the things we were doing is we were trying to look at this thing, and I've been sending information to colleagues, which we haven't had an opportunity to really talk, is that, and Councilman Bakay came before us a couple weeks ago and said, gee, we have a good school system, we do. You know, the athletics, John, do you want to jump in on me before?
No, I'm just, no, I'm just.
Okay. So, I said, we have a good system, music programs, athletic programs, X, Y, and Z and Q. And he said, and I look at that, and I walked away from that meeting, and with what Dr. Ogier said too, and apparently what we have today in place was a vision of education. And to my way of thinking, what we need to do is look at this a little differently before we go forward with a budget. And that is, let us look at what it cost us to implement the educational program in North Kingston for fiscal year 13 with an assumption, same amount of kids, same amount of teachers, and find out what that would cost to implement everything the same for the next fiscal year. What would that cost? Well, I've come up with a number, and I was going to present it to the budget committee here to discuss it, which we haven't, is that would only take an increase of $1 million in our budget to emulate what we have in place today next year. In other words, my car cost me X last year, it's going to cost me X plus, what inflation is, and so forth, and so on. And I took a crack at this, and my colleagues on the budget committee, you know, haven't had an opportunity to discuss this, because, in fact, I just cranked this thing out finally before the meeting tonight. I went through all the budgets, I assumed then, you know, 1% increase in the staff or the teaching pay, I looked at the benefits, what they would go up, and so forth, and so on, I did some other things. And when you look at this, with, combining with the cuts that Dr. Ogier offered, okay, and his, it's original budget to us, then if we look at this, I'm saying, why do we have to lose football or athletics for $560,000? I have something in front.
I think we're getting off of the motion, I believe.
Well, I'm just not understanding, because, we're getting ahead of the fact, because we're going through these machinations, and in fact, if we look at it differently, okay, we can go, we can satisfy everything that we're doing in our school system today by asking the town council for a million dollars more than the $58,713,000 we had before. We don't have to cut these programs. We don't have to get rid of this.
That's not part of the motion, Mr. Mudge.
It's not the motion, okay?
That's not part of the motion.
Just for information, because as part of this, okay, we're getting ahead of ourselves. We're not going to make a good decision this way, or it's not complete.
All right, I'm just making a clarification. The motion that's on the table is basically to...
Adopt the town cuts?
Is to adopt the 4% increase with, and that's basically, that number is all of the cuts that we've already voted and approved on in this committee.
Oh, it really is. And that's my point, Madam Chairman.
And I want to make sure that everybody understands that, so we're only talking to that at this time of, just basically, all the cuts that have already been approved, that number would be a 4% number.
Oh, yeah, I understand. That's Madam Chairman's point.
Yep, so that's why I say, let's make sure we confine our discussion to that particular motion, and if you'd like to discuss something more, we can, but right now, it's just the 4%, and it is the cuts that have already been voted and approved by this committee.
Yeah, I know, Madam Chair, I understand that, but we have an obligation to get back to the town council, give them a zero and a 2% budget. And aren't we going to do that?
And that motion hasn't come up yet. This is just a motion for a 4%.
I thought the motion was to approve, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Ogier's 4% budget increase.
Right, but we haven't gotten to anything else yet, Mr. Mudge.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. Well, I disagree with it that, okay? I don't accept a 4% increase going forward with the town.
Okay, that's, that's...
That's part of the motion, okay? Yeah, absolutely. And I think...
Okay, I saw, oh, I'm sorry.
We need a little more time with the budget committee to look at this, and maybe collectively make a recommendation. Not do it all tonight.
And I think that we won't be doing it tonight in terms of the 4%, well, the 4% we have, we've gotten there, but at the same time, this will not be an issue that we will be solving tonight. You know, this is going to be an issue that traditionally, we continue to speak about through June, as we wait for the different funding sources.
No, 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 no. We have to give a balanced budget to the town council.
Right now, I'm speaking, Mr. Mudge. So I'm just reminding the committee that don't expect that this motion and what we discuss here tonight will be balancing our budget for the rest of the year, because we haven't, we aren't there yet.
Madam Chair, are we going to provide a zero and 2% budget to the town council as they requested?
Right now, yes, we have to, they've asked us for that, but right now, the motion on the floor is just for 4%. Now, I see hands, I saw Mr. Biscardin, I saw Mrs. Avanzato, and I see Mr. Cerisi.
I will withdraw my comments at this time.
Mrs. Avanzato.
Obviously, I welcome, I think the rest of the committee welcomes, any suggestions, information, whatever, coming out of the budget subcommittee. So, when and, and I'm sure at some point, they will have some recommendations and suggestions, and I'm certainly open to hearing what those are. And I don't think that tonight is the end of anything, one way or another. If we vote on this 4%, it doesn't mean, I doubt very much that this is completely over In terms of our numbers in the budget, and our numbers regarding what we saved from outsourcing, those numbers are verified by our business manager, who has a CPA, who has a master's degree, and who I have faith in her numbers, certainly not my own calculations, I put faith in hers. The fact of the matter is that, Mr. Mudge, you, the time since I've been on this committee with you, you don't vote for any cuts. You've asked for our budget to be cut by the council, but you hesitate to vote for any cuts. No one on this committee wants to vote for these cuts, but we need, we need to make some cuts, Madam Chair.
You're absolutely right when I have, because I don't understand everything, you know?
Mrs. Avanzato has the floor.
I appreciate any, as I said, ongoing information that we can get from the budget subcommittee regarding your ideas, Bill. In terms of the town manager and the letter that was sent over, I think that was a good idea to ask for that, Mr. Cerisi, and I'm glad that he answered it in such a timely fashion. Better that we use the number that he anticipates than have them change the state aid number during their process, which has happened to us in the past. So it's a little bit more coordinated this way. And as I said, I just don't view this as being the end of the process, I view this as the beginning of the process, so I'll be supporting this motion.
Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief, you know, as far as, we could have saved the same amount of, you know, it's not even worth having a discussion, but I'm just going to say, you know, no disrespect to, to the union leadership and their math skills, but I'm certainly going to rely more on our business manager's math skills and recommendations as far as savings. We have a purpose to balance a budget, that's what our purpose is. We've asked the superintendent for 550-some-odd dollars of recommendation reductions to get to that 4% request, which essentially are all estimates at this time and represents a balanced budget. Certainly, if the council does not approve the 4%, then we have an unbalanced budget, and therefore, we will need to make additional cuts. This process is far from over, and anyone who's been on this committee for any amount of time will know that we will have this discussion every meeting, budgetary discussions, for at least the next three months. And again, I look forward to getting some recommendations, and I'm certainly open to hearing some present type of presentation or some type of recommendations from the budget subcommittee. Nobody's trying to stop anyone from providing or presenting information. I'm more than happy to talk, to listen, and to have some suggestions presented to us. But at this time, all we've done is simply make reductions, not an easy process, but make reductions to get to a 4% request. So, I mean, I'm, maybe I don't understand, it's like, you don't want to make the reductions? You think 4% is too much, too little? I mean, I don't know.
Mr. Gent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of comments. I just want to make it clear to the committee that, you know, in reading the letter from Mr. Embry, when he says, I suggest the fiscal year 13 number used, let's be clear, Mrs. King, what's the fiscal year 13 number?
I'll go backwards. The fiscal '14 number that I have is $50,000 less than the fiscal '13 number, based on anticipated lower enrollment.
So I want to make clear to the committee that, so, what we're using now is not in concert with what the town manager wants us to use. It's $50,000 off, so, so let's be clear that, you know, we say, I'll use the same number, you know, we're not on the same number yet, and we're, all of us, if we use the town manager's logic, is using a number that has no connection to actually what's been either attempted to be calculated, or was provided in the state funding formula to us. So, you know, again, if we, if we all want to be on the same music, that's one issue, but, you know, his number doesn't have any basis, in fact, more than using either what's in the governor's budget or calculations, so I just want to make that clear. The second point I want to make is, I guess what I'm confused with, Mr. Cerisi, is the point of the motion, we've approved all the cuts leading up to the 4%, so I'm just confused that we're just approving what we've already approved. So I don't see the need for the motion. We now, based on the last cut proposed by Mrs. Avanzato and approved by the committee, are at now a working budget from the superintendent of 59 and change. And so I'm only confused on why we're voting on something ahead of the 20th, before clarification of, you know, I guess, a 0, 2, and whatever ultimately we're going to vote for on the 20th. We're now, have approved up to a 4%, I don't know if the superintendent's going to offer any more off of that budget, except to meet the requirements that we've, through the town council, have asked him, but I just don't see the point of the motion, who are already there.
We have an obligation, and I'm sure Mrs. Carroll, Ms. Carroll can speak to that. The committee has a statutory obligation to adopt a bottom-line budget number and vote on that number, so...
By the 20th?
Right.
So my point is, why are we voting after a two-plus hour?
Is there only additional cuts that you'd like to put forward to the committee?
Well, we're meeting Friday, so my point is, why are we, you know, teeing up a discussion at 9:15 after two-plus hours, plus we still have another issue to discuss, when I thought the whole point of working this issue was to get to a vote on the 20th? I just don't understand why we're voting for something today that we're going to vote on the 20th for, that we rearranged schedules to get to the 20th, too. And I would also add that Mrs. King made an excellent point today, that there are her fiscal year 13 projection numbers, which would be more informative, or as informative, than the fiscal year 13 budgeted numbers, which would be useful, I think, not only for the budget subcommittee, but the full committee to look at in advance of voting on this. So my simply point is, we have a timeline for the 20th, why do we vote on something now when we've teed up very little discussion ahead of the 20th?
I see hands up, but I see Mrs. Helt had her hand up, and then we'll get back to this, so, Julia.
Thank you. Obviously, I'm just an observer here, but I've been observing you deal with these budget issues for a number of years now, and a lot of the things that, there's note on this sheet you have, that the lines have been reduced significantly in recent years, is absolutely accurate. You've taken... You've, you've taken down your budgets significantly over the period of time I've been observing them. And I guess I see the vote, given the cuts you've already approved, for the, the 4% as a vote of support by the school committee, that you see the rest of what's in your budget as being of significant importance. And it seems as though that might be a useful message to, to send and a useful exercise, even if you do end up having to cut more later on. You have really done a lot of cutting over, over these years, and the things that are left, well, you've already into things to some degree. And continuing to nibble away at them without ever having a sort of vote of support by your committee for what the superintendent is saying that you need has seemed a little odd here and there.
All right, I think that was, I will agree that was very well said. So in the hands that I saw next, I saw Mrs. Avanzato and then Mr. Biscardin.
Just briefly, I couldn't have said it better myself, that's exactly what it is. It's a, it's sort of a message that we're, that I'm sending, or at least that's how I feel about it, I don't know about the rest of the committee. And I guess the logic is, too, to give this committee more time to work with this budget, depending upon what the town council comes back and tells us. This is on for possible action tonight. It's not as if the 20th, you know, we have to vote on that night, we can vote before that night. And any member of this committee is free to make a motion to, to cut us to 2%, if that's what they want to do, or zero. I mean, we will have a list, I'm assuming, by law, this committee has to present one budget, not three budgets, not three separate budgets to the town council. We've already been over this before in previous years. One budget, that's what the law requires. However, in order to satisfy the council's request for information, and also, I think it's instructive for this committee, we will put together a list that would get us to 2% and that would get us to 0%, so that we all know where we stand if that's where we end up. And we'll know that ahead of time, and I think that's very valuable. It doesn't need, obviously, to be the complete budget book three times, we wouldn't do that, it would be unnecessary expense, et cetera. But, so, I don't see any reason not to vote tonight. The committee is free to, to amend the motion and go other places if they wish. Thank you.
Mr. Biscardin.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I, I just want to make sure, because this is really only my second ride on this Ferris wheel.
It's always fun.
We are, we're suggesting a 4%. Dr. Ojai's suggesting a 4% with these particular line items to get to that 4%. Correct? We are not married to these particular line items, they can be massaged and changed as we vote and see fit, am I correct?
It could happen, yes.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that.
The question came up about new information, and so I would ask Dr. Ojai, do you anticipate getting new information between now and the 20th that will be changing your recommendations?
I do not.
That is, I'm sorry, but that is, you're basing that on not getting anything from the Budget Subcommittee, which they're, which they're going to provide? I mean, there, there is a chance that the Budget Subcommittee could, I'm sorry, that the Budget Subcommittee could make suggestions that would make, that would, make reconsider?
Oh, we can always reconsider, I mean, you know, up until, you know, I mean, you know, up until next year, you know, we can consider, you know, we can continue to move stuff around as to what we're going to find and what we're not going to find. So I'm not saying that, we're still going to need the Budget Subcommittee to be making recommendations. You know, it's the sort of thing of, this is just a 4%. You know, we still have to have the 2% and the 0%. So that's why I'm like, I don't see this as precluding anything that they're, they're going to be doing.
That's, I know, I'm just asking for clarification, that's your person, I'm not looking for an argument, I'm just...
Oh, and I'm going to try and stop the argument, I'm sorry.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying, I just, I just, you know, sometimes it helps to, for me, to hear it explained more than one way, so, you know, it helps me understand. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, just one last. Many, many a time over the past years, we would be voting on budget items, I mean, I can't even remember, because the State House, they didn't get, they didn't vote on their budget until forever. Went into the summer, so, it was June. So this is definitely not, it's just far from over.
Yeah, that, that's what I see, this is far from over. I mean, it is the sort of thing of, we will still be here as, as work progresses, and we will still be shifting things around to come to where we ultimately want to be. So this is just a first step, and I do think that Mrs. Helt said it right. I mean, this would be, you know, if we could have the dream budget, these would be the least amount of cuts that we would take in order to have what we consider to be the best education that we could provide with the money with 4%. I mean, that, it would be our ultimate goal. So then the other budgets we are going to be, have to provide would be less than optimal, and that will be tougher to get there, because the proposals that Dr. Ojai gave us for the 4% were, they were not things that necessarily, we wanted to cut, but they were certainly not very painful in, in terms of the cuts to the educational program. It's going to be more painful to get below 4%. That's where it's going to hurt.
Well, that's why we have to start looking at these now, Madam Chairman, so the community knows what they are.
And this isn't, this isn't a vote that's going to be ending. I'm just saying, this is just for 4%. We're going to be moving more.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, please. That we, make the motion to the point that we review this data at the next School Committee meeting and postpone this, this vote until then.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion is to postpone our vote until the 20th. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Biscardin and then Mr. Jones.
I think it's, I'm sorry, did you have somebody to the right of you, I believe, maybe?
Chair, that's not really an amendment to the motion that was presented. It's more of a new motion.
It's going to be a new amendment.
Because you're, you're not making an amendment to the motion to adopt the 4% budget. The motion was to postpone the vote, so it's really not an amendment to the motion.
An amendment can't negate the original motion, is my understanding, and that would negate the original motion.
It could change the original motion, but it can't.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, I want to postpone it.
So shouldn't you vote on the original motion first, and then if it fails, Mr. Mudge makes his motion to table this?
Yes, that would seem to make more sense. All right, are there any further comments on the original motion? Mr. Cerisi.
Let me be very brief. As I said when I made my original motion, there is still much more discussion to be had, and much more work to be done. All this motion does is simply bring us to a 4% request. What I would like to do, should this motion pass, is continue the conversation tonight and possibly next week as well, on what we would look, what our list would look like should we get 2%. What our list would look like should we get 0%. And I think once we finalize those documents, I think the superintendent said earlier, he was 75% done with those documents, once those documents are finalized, they should be and need to be sent over to the town council with whatever budget we adopt, because they requested that. It's, we don't have to by statute, but they've requested it, and I don't have an issue fulfilling that request. They've made the same request every year since I've been on the school committee, and we've always fulfilled the request, I have no issue doing that. This vote is not to stop any further discussion or any further information, we still need to continue this discussion and continue this work tonight, after this vote's taken. All it simply does is adopt the number of a 4% request.
We've already approved the 4%.
You have to approve the number, Mrs. Carroll, by statute, please explain to the committee.
We've already made the cuts to 4%.
Mrs. Carroll has the floor.
You're right, they've made the cuts, but you haven't adopted that number at this point.
Sure, absolutely.
We need to adopt that bottom-line number for 4%, and then you can always change it up until you have to submit it to the town council and adopt on the 20th.
Exactly, why would we adopt the budget when we could, we can do that at the next meeting?
Because let's get something done, rather than kicking the can down the road.
We're doing nothing.
We're doing nothing. Stop abstaining from voting, yes or no, do something.
All right, all right, I will, I will recognize folks here. I will, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you.
And we simply have an up or down vote, I, I really, it's like, you know, I, this committee, I don't want to paint the whole committee, but it's like, we're kicking the can down the road here.
We're not.
No abstain, no, don't abstain, go yes or no, and let's finish doing the work, there's still more work to be done. We're wasting time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this motion? Ms. Burglin, could you take a roll call vote, please? And could you repeat the, the motion first?
Mrs. Cerisi, could you repeat that number in your motion?
Oh, I think it was like $10.50. It was, I had it written down, and now I can't find it.
It was $59,137,891.
Correct.
Thank you. So the motion is to approve the superintendent's proposed budget of $59,137,891. John Biscardin.
Yes.
Larry Cerisi.
Yes.
Cheryl Clarkin.
Yes.
Robert Jones.
Yes.
William Mudge.
No.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Linda Avanzato.
Yes.
Motion passes six to one, thank you. Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I stated on the onset, I want to continue this discussion. Dr. Ojai, I know you've, and Mrs. King, I know you started preparing a list that will bring us to approximately 2%, and then there's a secondary list that will bring us to approximately 0%. If I remember correctly, you communicated through our informational packages here and on the onset that you haven't yet gotten to that 0% number. If you'd like to discuss that information, present some of that information, I think we need to be cognizant of what we're facing here, should we receive less than 4%, and take some action or certainly be prepared to take some action. Thank you, Dr. Ojai.
Are you looking for that right now? Okay. As I, as I stated earlier, I gave kind of a condensed version of this, but I'll go a little more into detail. You know, we've put together a list, and we've gotten down to, well, approximately $1.2 million worth of cuts. And we're, we need to make $1.7 million further, further cuts, almost 1.8, if we're going to get to a zero budget. I cannot begin to tell you how difficult that would be. Just to give you a quick itemized list, there aren't that many items on this, so I'll, I'll run down. Items like filming these meetings would need to go away. Reductions in legal...
You could probably sell the filmings of these meetings to some comedy channel for a large profit for the district.
That idea hasn't occurred to me.
It's a joke, it's just a joke.
That we would...
Lot of jokes.
All right, Dr. Ojai has the floor.
I'm sorry, Dr. Ojai.
No problem. The, the list, you know, and these are the easy items. You know, adjustments in, in legal expenditures based on recent years, perhaps we could find $8,000 in reductions. General supplies, $80,000. These are supplies that have been cut significantly already in recent years. We don't have specifics on, you know, every, you know, roll of, ream of copier paper and that sort of thing that this would affect, but it would just be, we need to learn to live with $80,000 less. That would be brutal. Reduction in professional organizations, the things I would not cut would be the organizations that the school committee has, the superintendents and the principals in particular, because we learn so much from those organizations. But we could probably trim about $5,000 there. Remember, I'm, I'm hoping to get to 1.8 million, and I've just talked about a $5,000 item. You can appreciate how difficult this can be. Advanced placement professional development, that's something that does a lot of good for this community. We normally send roughly the equivalent of about $9,000 worth of that kind of professional development a year, we would cut it in half. Technology-related supplies, I've said it over almost every budget meeting, that's an area that we attack almost every year, and we wonder why we have a hard time with technology. It's amazing that we have the good technology that we do have. We could be so much better in that area, and that is the area that education is moving. But we cannot even start to go down that road if we continue to cut. We would talk, you know, again, put the onus on Dr. Kenworthy and his staff to find another FTE at the high school. We've cut significantly at the high school in recent years, far more than we should have, we would have to find even more. This would certainly mean the reduction in foreign languages that are taught at the high school, and more than likely, the elimination of family and consumer science as well. Reduction in vehicle maintenance, reductions in general maintenance, reductions in equipment, reductions in building, elimination of certain building improvements, improvements for about $13,000. Our webpage coordinators, this is something that really helps us with communication. Parents really appreciate those webpages being kept up to date with all kinds of information for them, staff, students, all, you know, we use that, that would, the help for that would go away. We have $75,000 that is a district line for the update of textbooks, you know, when you get a new chemistry series or, or a new series of math books. And think about this, we just talked about that we are transferring to the Common Core curriculum, that's K-12 mathematics and English, and we're going to cut our textbook budget by one-third. That does not make sense. We would, once we get to that point, we would be looking at such things as, you know, there's just not any more we can cut. Our staff, I can, I can visualize staff at every building, because I've done this for the last four years as an administrator in this district, and we have, you know, a nurse in every building, we have a reading specialist, we have a principal in every building, we have teachers at every grade level, and I've shown this committee and the town council the data that says we are at capacity for these, for our classroom teachers. Every special education teacher that we have, we absolutely need. Every paraprofessional that we have in our buildings, we need because of either safety issues or special education issues. The mission of the, the school would be significantly compromised if we don't have those people. Our support staff, occupational therapists, so on and so forth. We're going to do what we can to be efficient in all of these areas, and we have been. But reductions, you know, more significant at this point, they just can't happen, and for me to come before you and say that I'm doing the responsible thing for our community and our kids. So we would have to go to areas like our fifth-grade music program, doesn't necessarily have to happen. It's a great thing in this district to have a strings program, that would start to fade away. The music teachers will tell you that if we don't have the fifth-grade music program, it's more than likely that we will not have nearly the numbers of those kids who are taking music in the middle school and at the high school. And so that would start to chip away at something that this community takes great pride in, and as I mentioned earlier, is a great thing for students to stay engaged in a way that even helps them academically. It's, it's one of the best things that we do. After-school activities, all of our school clubs, that we take so much pride in at this high school and in middle school, they would go away. All of our sports, $560,000, all of our varsity teams, junior varsity, imagine the kids who would flock to private schools when they find out that they can't play a varsity sport, or that, you know, they're not sure if it's going to happen, because they're not sure if the private funding is going to happen for those programs. Elimination of, you know, all of the after-school concerts, we could teach music, but not necessarily have the concerts at night, because we pay teachers a stipend to, to do those concerts. We have eight nurses district-wide, one at each school. If, obviously, so many kids, you know, have prescriptions they need to take at a certain time of day, insulin shots, all those kinds of things. Imagine how difficult that is to coordinate, to say, "Okay, this nurse is now going to work at two different schools." And what happens when we have an emergency, where having a nurse on the spot would have made a major difference, and that nurse happens to be at the wrong school at that moment? And how much we would regret having made this decision. And like I said, the last item would be our NEASC accreditation. Our school is NEASC accredited, it means a lot, it's a, it's a, it's an issue that colleges and the community looks at as a point to say, "Okay, this school has really done an analysis of, of what good schools have, and they have all of those things." And NEASC puts its stamp of approval on that for you, it's a cumbersome process, we've already done all the work, the only piece left is the visitation year for, to have them come... The only piece left is the visitation year for, to have them come and, and, you know, actually do the inspection. But it costs sixty thousand dollars. If we don't have an after-school clubs program and sports program, and music is reduced so significantly, and we're not getting to our maintenance on time, and all of these things are deteriorating, I can guarantee you, we would not get a NEASC accreditation. So my point is, just put that at the end, because if we have to go to that level of cuts, we're probably not getting NEASC accredited anyway. I'm not putting this list out there to scare people, and, and Mr. Cerisi and members of the committee. You know, my feeling is that this list, to me, is complete. That the, I think what the, the spirit of this letter, as I read it from the town council, is that they would like to know what it would mean to go to a two and to go to a zero. When I rack my brain, and I come up with everything that I could possibly think of, responsible and irresponsible and simply absurd, I get to one point one-eight-seven million, four hundred. That represents a one point three increase in local funding, down from four. After that, there's still five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars left to go to get to a zero, and I don't know how to get there. And I, and I cannot, in good conscience, make any further recommendations to get beyond that point, that I can say, you know, I'm, I already can't say, in my responsibility as a superintendent, that those things would be good for this community. And I certainly cannot go any further than that. So my recommendation to the committee is that, in my opinion, this list is complete, and that, you know, we can continue to talk about the budget, I'm not sure that we need to meet on the twentieth, because, you know, the, the subcommittee can talk about their ideas at any point, we can continue to massage things, and, you know, in all likelihood, we're going to have to make some more cuts anyway from, from the signals we're getting from the town council. So, but I think they need to understand what further reductions beyond four mean, and I believe that this spreadsheet that I've handed to you gives that indication. And I'd be happy to provide a narrative with that, as I've just spoken, in terms of, you know, why I feel it's, would be almost impossible to go further. The only other areas that I can think of would be just totally irresponsible kinds of things, like having one principal oversee two schools. Those kinds of crazy ideas. And I don't think there would be any parent in this district that would want those kinds of things to happen. And, and quite frankly, I think I'd just be irresponsible to even suggest them.
Yeah, we did, we did try to look at coordinating two principals together a number of years ago, and we got many people who came to the school committee and wrote us emails about how much they did not want to go down that, that idea.
This is, you know, there, there are districts in this state that are at those emergency stages. My, my hometown is One Socket, and I, and my sister teaches in that district, and I see the kinds of issues that they are facing. We're not in that situation. And, and in my humble opinion, I, I think we're a long way from ever being in that kind of a situation, thank God. You know, we, to this point, have been able to sustain the school department that we all know and love. And, and I don't think it is, you know, the worst thing in the world for our community, particularly at this point, where there have been increases in taxes, and we have, we have lived through them, and, and even to the point where the, the raises in taxes have not translated to increases in school department funding. Over the last four years, taxes have increased by over eleven percent. The school department has only received three percent increase funding over all that time. Those years where we have taken zeros, and even going backwards, we've, in one year, we even got less than zero, we went backwards, those years take their toll. We're at a point now where we've done all that cutting exercise, that's why I, I know this so well at this point, and know about every teacher in every building. We've done it, and there's nothing else. And now, we're looking at another year of something like a zero would be devastating.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mudge, I see your hand.
I'm just going to go back and make some of the comments I made before, because I want to really, I, I was bringing some information before the budget committee, because I wanted to look at this thing in a different light. Dr. Ojai, you just made a good, a comment about, we need to sustain this. Well, what I want, I would like to have you do, okay, if you would, okay, is to tell me, or the committee, or the town, the folks in the town, okay, with the assumption, with the assumption that we have the same amount of kids in this district next year, same amount of personnel, nobody gets laid off, what would it cost us to run the school department? In other words, emulate everything we're doing this year, next year, with those two assumptions? What would the cost be? Would you come up with a budget?
I, yes.
Good, would you, I won't even know how you-
It would, it would, it would be about a five and a half percent increase.
No, no, okay. For example, see, that's what I would like to see. In other words, we're not going to add any, any people, we're not going to add any programs, we're not going to do this. I guess we might ultimately have additional mandates, you know, you know, placed on us, but let's assume that doesn't happen.
You know, to get to your point, let me answer your question. That's the point that I, I've made here. We've made, you know, when you adjust for the, that Blue Cross number, there's still about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in cuts that we just made, to get to four percent. I'm not adding anything.
I, I didn't say that.
So, so essentially, the four percent budget with four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars' worth of cuts is what we're doing now, because I'm not adding any programs. You know, people think, well, you're adding, you know, that much money, what are you adding?
Some line item.
What we're doing is adjusting for particularly a healthcare number that just went up by ten percent. Pension issues, things that are not necessarily within our control, and we need to adjust for that. And that's, the town needs to adjust for that too with their budgeting, and so I'm not adding anything, I, I'm essentially doing what you're asking me to do.
Well, see-
Give me this year's program for next year. Okay, if I do that, I need to add like a five and a half percent budget.
No, no, Dr. Ojai, here, I've, I've got this, and we haven't submitted to the budget committee yet, that shows me if, for example, if we do nothing to our payroll, and every, the payroll is the same as it was last year, okay, and we increase it by one percent, okay, that amounts to three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, more than in fiscal year thirteen. So now I know what the delta is there. I can go through and look at regular overtime, that goes up thirty-eight thousand with the percentage. Your additional compensation goes up three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Stipends goes up, okay, excuse me, stipends stays at three, in my, in my, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand-
Bill, can I ask you a question? I'm sorry to interrupt. Are you going up one percent on pretty much everything? Is that-
Well, I, I did, and how it affects other things like, for example, with the exception of, 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 what am I trying to say, benefits, you, I have, I have an increase, okay, of total benefits of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So what I, just with salaries, okay, and I stand to be corrected, please, by going up one percent, okay, on salaries, and then ten percent on healthcare costs, which I put in here, and of course on the extra FYCA you have to pay, the extra Medicare you have to pay because you're up one percent, I calculate that out as the total. The total is one million, seventy-five thousand dollars, to emulate your salaries and expenses to maintain your programs that you had this year, next year. So, if, that's what the information is, I will send you this, and con, please confirm that. And if I'm wrong, fine, then I'll go for another number. But we need to sell something to this community, and that is, that is, this is what we had this year. You know, I got a Ford five-hundred, you know, model. This is what we're going to have next year. Tell me what the difference is. We'll go at least fight for that. We know something we're fighting for, and the community will know what we're fighting for. And that's what the baseline number is.
I, I, I believe I have done that. I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm not understanding, Mr. Mudge, because I believe I have done that. The budget you have received shows you where there are any changes. And, and, you know, we've had a couple of budget subcommittee meetings, we've had a number of meetings already this month, we've been meeting almost every week since the beginning of the year, and, you know, people have had plenty of opportunity to ask questions, why is the number different? And, and in some cases, we've met with you separately, or in a meeting, or in a budget subcommittee meeting, and we've answered a lot of those questions. You know, what you're asking for is exactly what I've done, you know, and what Mrs. King has done. And you have a detailed budget booklet that shows you where adjustments have been made and, and, you know, and if you have questions, why, we've answered why. So, I just don't understand-
Okay, I'll bring it to the budget committee and let them look at it. Thank you.
Linda, you had a comment for me?
I'll ask you later, I had a couple of questions.
Mr. Biscardin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, um, I appreciate all the hard work you put into this, Mrs. King and Dr. Ojai, and the passion in which you present it, and the, um, the consequences of the actions if we have to go this far. I do hope, however, that with the help of the budget subcommittee, that we could make, you would be open to making some changes as far as the additional, the initial line item versus the dollar figure. In other words, if we can come up, if the budget subcommittee can find, for an example, sixty thousand dollars to, to offset the elimination of the grade-five string music teachers, you would be amenable to that. As well as things like the elimination of the after-school music program, and even the reduction in textbooks. If we can find, or we, meaning the budget subcommittee, with the help of, with input from the rest of the school committee, can find dollars to offset that, that you would be open to, to listen.
I, I definitely would be.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was, um, I'm not sure who had their hand up first.
Go ahead, Linda.
I'll say, just, okay, Mrs. Avanzato.
I was just going to say, I just hope, as a follow-up to what John just said, I, I sure hope it doesn't come to that. If it does, we're in big trouble in this district. Looking at a whole different scenario for kids leaving this school and going to college. Just, you know, as someone who has a freshman in college right now, coming out of this high school, they take advantage of the opportunities offered here, and that's what gets them into school, these after-school clubs and active, kids that don't do sports, we put a lot of money into sports in this district, and sports helps a lot of kids get into college. Those that don't participate in athletics, the, the clubs really help a lot. It just, it would be truly, you know, devastating if it came to that.
If I, if I could just respond to Mrs. Avanzato's comment, you know, I, I just want to make sure people understand that, you know, I, I don't put a list out like this lightly. I know it creates a lot of anxiety for the people who work in this district, and the parents who send their kids to this district, and the kids themselves. I'm just trying to be upfront with everybody, and completely honest. I'm not trying to do a fear tactic, I'm not trying to threaten, or do, you know, obviously, if the number comes back and, and it's a really low number, I mean, when I look at this right now, I don't know what else we would do. I truly do not know what else we would do. Any other ideas that are out there, I, I would love to hear them, if we don't have to go to these things. If I felt like we could do the mission that we had today with an even lower budget, I would be the first to suggest it. That's not my point. I, I'm not just looking to create as large a budget as I possibly can, and, and I hope people don't feel that way. Um, you know, in years past, people have said things like, well, here, you know, it's a kabuki dance, or things like that, and dismissive comments about these kinds of lists. And I, I am the last person to want to put a list like this out there. And, and I've, I've suggested to members of the town council, can we, can we streamline this process some way so we know sooner, you know, have, have an honest discussion with one another about what the number needs to be? And we'll just shoot for it immediately, instead of, you know, spending a lot of time yelling at one another. It doesn't have to come to that. But people need to know that, you know, the history that we've, we've dealt with, the cuts that we've already made, and the impact that going further would mean. And I truly, you know, it, it's, it's a matter of options. If it's not the strings program, then what is it? Is it someone's special ed teacher that they need? Is it, is it going over the cap at, at, in classes at the middle school, or the high school, the elementary school? Which, by the way, if we do that, we would be sued and we would lose, which would incur even more costs. And it just wouldn't be responsible, because we already have caps that are appropriately set. Going higher would not be good for kids. So, you know, is it, you know, shearing a principal? Is it not maintaining a building appropriately? You know, there are no good choices. And there are only, and there are some that you cannot do, unless, without either being out of compliance, against the law, completely irresponsible, you know, you just can't do them. So you've got to go to the things you can do. And that's when you end up with things like arts and sports programs. You can do those. I don't want to, I think it would be totally irresponsible, but you can do them if you have to. And that's why these, you know, when this request comes out, it always leads to, to that direction, especially when you really go deep.
Okay, I saw Mr. Jones, and then I saw Mr. Cerisi's hand.
Um, thank you. I prefer to wait till Mrs. King is back, so I'll yield to Mr. Cerisi, unless he needs the same thing.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. I just, again, wanted to reiterate what I had said on the onset when we, I made the motion and we began this debate. In no way do I see this process or this discussion over. I want the budget subcommittee to continue to meet and to continue to work collaboratively with the administration. I want them to have a thorough discussion and understanding of this list, and maybe come back with maybe an approval, maybe some amendments, maybe some alternatives, whatever it may be. We all need to be open to continuing the discussion and further ideas and, and maybe some changes here. So I, I just want to make it clear, that's, that's what my objective is here, that's what I'm looking to see accomplished. Nothing we've done tonight prohibits us from continuing the discussion and continuing the work, and I hope that we do.
Mr. Jones.
Um, thank you. I guess I'd ask, um, Dr. Ojai, if, um, he, he could have Mrs. King tomorrow provide, and I think you provide a lot today, Mrs. King, but just to reconfirm the, the data you sent, because I, I think it did include the seventy thousand, is that correct?
It did, yep.
So I guess, the only thing maybe is to, is to resend the same file, but with the fiscal year thirteen projections added, as you discussed, if we could get that tomorrow?
I'm sorry, I have meetings all day tomorrow, but I will try to get it to you Thursday midday.
The next point I would ask, on, it would be helpful if, Dr. Ojai, on the, the secondary list of cuts you did, if you could add at least the three-digit UCOA that goes along with it, so we could, we could see in the budget, you know, for example, reduction in general supplies, is that limited to the five-sixty-one?
Five-six-one-oh-one. We can do that on some of those accounts, Mr. Jones, but when it comes to the staffing, one, we don't really know where that would come from, and two, those could come from, those could come out of hundreds of accounts, depending on where those people are allocated, there's pension numbers, there's all kinds of numbers. So, we can do that on, on some of the more, you know, easier items, I think probably on the salary, the, the FTE piece, we can't do that with.
So, so the eighty thousand for general supplies is five-six-one-oh-one?
Yeah.
So-
That one I remember off the top of my head. And then the other ones, I can give you the accounts for those clearly, except for the FTEs.
So in five-six-one-oh-one, for fiscal year twelve, I'm sorry, do you have your budget in front of you?
And that, that'll end up coming, you know, spread the pain, it's coming from everywhere, it's coming from across the board. So the five-six-one-oh-one is the total of that object for general supplies across the district. Where it'll end up flowing out is, that'll be in your detailed package also, but I can tell you now that that would come from everywhere in the district.
Right, right, but from different locations.
Correct.
But from the five-digit, it comes from the five-six-one-oh-one.
Right.
So in fiscal year twelve, that was three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, roughly?
I think so, yep, that number sounds right.
And what was the number for this fiscal year?
FY thirteen, I don't have that in front of me. I don't have what the projections are- I don't have what the projections are in front of me for that.
Do you have, well, okay, not the projections, but the budgeted number?
Uh, I don't know, not in total. I have it spread out all over the place. I don't have the total of the 56101 in front of me.
Okay, roll it up to 56101.
Because that's actually part of, no, I don't.
Okay.
But that's all information we can put down here. I can add that here to Dr. Ojai's list of cuts.
I think it would be helpful on some of these, like you're saying, to resend this fiscal year 14 budget cuts. For example, reduction in general supplies, you know, if it's 56101, to put the FY12 actual, to put the FY13 budgeted, and then to put the FY14, I guess, adopted now.
Recommended, yep.
Number, well, adopted number, and then obviously, the revised adopt, revised number taking out the 80,000. I think for some of those, these figures, it would give a little more context to that.
Okay, I will try to do that.
So that would be helpful to give some clarity to the magnitude of these cuts. I guess the other thing I would maybe ask the committee or ask for clarification for the public standpoint is perhaps, you know, the guidance from the town, unusual or not as it may be, to ask all this, you know, perhaps we should engage in a dialogue with the town. Clearly, the expenditure side is the purview of the school committee once funds are appropriated. And that perhaps the right focus from the town may not necessarily be on increases over expenditures, because I think as Dr. Ojai said, you know, if you get to the point where you're just focusing on holding your expenditures, it somewhat ignores the realities of life, at least life with healthcare and other stuff. I think the more appropriate discussion, though, is a focus on what would be the impact on the need for the local tax appropriation. Because the revenue side of this is clearly not necessarily equating to the expenditure side, except the point that obviously the two have to balance at some point. I think, for example, you know, saying we have a 4% increase in expenditures does not necessarily equate to a 4% increase in the tax levy.
That's a good point.
And so I think, you know, what some people need to realize is that if the Town Council chooses not to fully give us 4% in the tax levy, it doesn't necessarily mean that our expenditures won't rise by concordant amount. For example, we haven't discussed some of these issues that Dr. Ojai mentioned, which are revenue, on the revenue side, we haven't fully discussed things like the business partnership, expense or revenue. We haven't talked about the fiscal year 13 projections. For example, we know we signed a contract that saved us 86,000. We signed that after. We already had a budget that in theory was balanced. So I think we need to clarify as a committee for the public that the expenditure side is painful to cut because it's ignoring the revenue side at this point. And I think the Town Council perhaps, when they deal internally with their own departments, that may be appropriate, you know, and they're dealing with the school department, maybe they're asking the wrong question. And it leads to these kinds of discussions, which are not perhaps fruitful, as Dr. Ojai mentioned, that the more appropriate discussion would be on what's the percentage of town tax levy that the school department needs to realize its vision. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, could you clarify for me what the 86,000 contract is that you were talking about?
I believe if you go back to your 27 November School Committee minutes, that when the electric contract was proposed...
Oh, the electricity contract, okay.
Yes, I think 86,000 was the savings number that was...
Right, yeah, I just missed that part that you were referring to that.
Yeah, that was for fiscal year 13.
Yes, but we did take some, this, in the August time period, we had 10 students who went off to, over the summer, we didn't have as many Jamestown students who came in, we had 10 students...
We had a lot of career tech. Right in August, we had to make significant adjustments because we had large variances in our career tech students, the number of students that actually ended up going out. The other thing that I can remember...
Charter students.
Yeah, the charters. And I also distinctly remember that at the time that that budget was passed, was February last year, and from that point to when we got to June or July, the price of diesel fuel had gone up dramatically. So that was another area, one of the other areas, that there was a hole that we were plugging and moving things around in. But then the electricity contract came after that.
And so that all helped then to balance things out for this year, am I, okay. That's what I was gonna say. It wasn't like, yes, we balanced, but then because of the summertime, we had more things go up, that just merely kept us in balance. It was not something that suddenly will have this windfall, it was keeping us in balance.
Well, actually, Madam Chair, I believe when you approved those changes, because of the need to be a balanced budget, weren't those, if you go back to the August minutes and look, but weren't those changes covered by offsetting adjustments elsewhere, Mrs.?
Well, they had to be.
Right, so...
We couldn't go back and ask anybody else for any money, so we had to make other cuts. We cut, one thing I can remember is we cut facilities, maintenance, $150,000.
Right.
That was one of the cuts that was there. So, yeah, we had to pull from other areas that we're now managing to those dollars because we had to.
Right, so that's why I think the fiscal year 13 projections will be very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Cerisi, and then my question to the committee will be, it is 10 o'clock, so we have two other items that I'm not sure where the committee wants to go. So, Mr. Cerisi.
Hold on. I have to say that, Mr. Biscardin.
One request, Dr. Ojai, page 74 of our budget book. Is the student enrollment projections?
Yes.
And it's broken down, school by school, grade by grade, and, you know, we have the student-teacher ratio there. Obviously, the student-teacher ratio numbers have changed since we've, since you originally presented this preliminary budget, because we've, I believe we have made some reductions to FTEs.
What that number is, Mr. Cerisi, for me to clarify, is by contract what we are allowed to go to.
No, no.
Student-teacher ratios.
No, no, in other words...
That little box.
Right, the numbers, the numbers next to each school higher up.
Oh, yep, yep.
So those projection numbers of student-teacher ratios have changed because we've reduced this preliminary budget by eliminating some teacher positions. So I'm guessing that obviously some of those student-to-teacher ratio numbers are higher than...
Than the high school, yeah.
Right, than what's represented here.
Mm-hmm.
If we could, you know, as we continue to work on this process and move forward, maybe just some updated information as far as the action that we've already taken, reflect that in the student-teacher ratio numbers? Because obviously, the student-teacher ratio numbers are not what they were or projected to be because of some of the actions that we've taken. So I think the committee and the community needs to be cognizant of the fact of that these numbers have already changed, and they may change further, but we certainly need to know where we are right now.
Okay.
If we could, again, I just, you know, I think it's a couple of teacher positions, and I know it's a moving target and a moving number, and I know it's an estimate, just the, you know, best estimate we can at this point, just so we know where we are effective today.
All right, so my question is, we have one, our, yes, Mr. Cerisi.
The item of, I believe, is our next...
School committee representative to audit committee.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask if we could table that until our next meeting, because I don't know if we've all received the same emails and information, but I've received some conflicting information as far as people who've applied or haven't applied or are going to apply. And I really think, these people volunteer their time, and I don't want to leave anyone out of the process, and I think, I think we need to have some questions answered and some information provided to us. I certainly don't have an issue appointing somebody. I just want to make sure that nobody's been left out of this process, because there's been some conflicting information, including an email that I think we all received in the past couple of hours. So I just want to give those people an opportunity to clarify and explain. And certainly, I don't think it really impacts things if we hold off a week on making an appointment to a position that doesn't expire for another month and a half.
One second, Ed.
All right. So the committee's looking to put this off. It probably, we probably would not have this for discussion on the meeting on the 20th, that that may be just when we're discussing budget items, so this may be something that we push to our March meeting. But if the appointment doesn't need to be filled until sometime in the end of March, we should be okay.
Well, I guess I'm confused since, as I understand it, our representative to the Audit Committee can only come from the Audit Committee.
We have to send three names over to the Town Council is what they're going to want. Right now, we have two names. It's a sort of thing, if we wait, we will just, it will be to get another name, and then we would have three names to be able to send over to the Town Council. We don't pick who is our representative. We pick three names of those that are submitted to us.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know, last night, the Town Council voted to appoint Mark Bamford, so we are only left with Dick August on our...
Oh, okay.
...point at this point, but that doesn't change...
I have further information.
Well, I guess what's, I'd like to clarify, I'm sorry, I don't mean to...
That's okay, no, go right ahead.
Is that my understanding is, you know, we get a list of, and maybe I'm thinking of this wrong, is that the Audit Committee has a certain number of members, and then we recommend who we'd like to be our representative from that group.
No.
No, we make a recommendation as to, we give the Town Council three names of people who we would like to represent our group, and then they pick from one of those three names as to which one of those will be our representative. It's not that we pick, we look at the Audit Committee and say, we want him to be our representative.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
It's unfortunate, it's very unfortunate that it's written that way, actually, since the Audit, since the Town Council has jurisdiction over the appointment out of four or five members, I really think the School Committee should have been given a direct vote on the fifth member for our representative and not have to put three names up, but that's the way the ordinance was written. At the time it was written, which was only a few years ago, I advocated for that, for a direct appointment by the School Committee. However, I think we have...
I didn't make out.
I didn't make out very well. I think we have an embarrassment of riches here, though, because Mr., is it Bamford? Am I saying that right? Who was appointed last night, has children in the system and has for a long time, and I think he's really well acquainted and a great person to be appointed, but I know Mr. August is stellar applicant. And I did speak to Mr. Leonard earlier, who had said that he may put his, he's considering whether he's gonna put his name forward again. He may not, if he just, if he sees Mr. August on there, he might just have Mr. August be our only applicant, because I know he really would like him to serve as well, so putting it off...
Lyndon, are they both on the Audit Committee now, were they both appointed?
Matt Leonard is on the Audit Committee now, but his term is expiring in March. Mr. August is not on the Committee now. He's...
And Mr. Bamford?
I guess, as of last night.
And Mr. Bamford's our rep then on the Audit Committee?
No, he's not our rep. He's the Town Council's appointment.
Because we got one slot reserved for us.
We have one slot. We're supposed to have three names, but we have forwarded two names at times when we didn't have three names.
We have forwarded less names.
Which would be fine.
So, but you're saying we have to submit three names?
Town Council asks for three names.
Don't have to.
In the past, when we have not received three applicants, we have submitted less for a position.
Which is fine.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, well, thank you for the clarification, so I would support the motion, except to say that I still hope this doesn't postpone, you know, the School Committee, the School District pays for a portion of the audit. The audit's done. I'd hate for that delay for us to get some kind of briefing from the auditors, you know, waiting for us to appoint our liaison or our representative. I think there's some pertinent questions sitting in the audit that deserve some answers, and the sooner that whoever is responsible for teeing up us, whether it's a joint session with the Town Council or, you know, whether we need to do it on our own, but I hope we're not delayed in getting as soon as possible a meeting with the auditors.
Mr. Cerisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly concur with Mr. Jones, and I think our current representative's term expires on March 15th, and certainly, as Mrs. Page mentioned, we could do this at the latest, our first meeting in March, which is prior to March 15th. So I'd like to, you know, certainly make sure that the district has representation there as well.
And he will continue to serve in that capacity, actually, until someone else is appointed, because on previous occasions, they've gone months and even six months and even a year with the person that, whose term expired. They continue on until someone's appointed in their place, so we shouldn't be a gap.
Lyndon, I think what we're saying is regardless of anybody that's there, at least we'd like to sit down, if we have a rep, fine. If not, we'd like to sit down immediately and start asking and have some dialogue with the auditor, the auditors, because we have questions.
All right, so we'll put this off for a different meeting. We have, we have citizens' comments and we have somebody who has signed up. My preference would be to have them come up and speak, and then we can decide if we have, if we want to discuss the last item on the agenda. So we have, is the committee all right if we have citizens' comments at this point?
Yeah.
Somebody's obvious has been waiting here for a long time.
I'd ask that that be the last item, since we have an executive session after this.
Whitney Hill?
My name's Whitney Hill. I'm a law contractor that you're eliminating this year. Right now, we can't even do our runs with the buses we have right now. We're running spare buses, doing regular trips, runs that the mainline buses should be running. And the other thing is, on this one, on number nine, if you happen to terminate that bus, will that contract be awarded to me? Or am I losing one? I've had this bus contract for 24 years. You know, if it gets terminated, or...
I have no answer for you for that.
I don't, I don't have that information in front of me tonight.
Nothing has been decided yet either, Mr. Hill, on that.
No, I'm just asking that question, if it does get terminated.
Well, I can certainly, we can certainly lodge your request for that. I would need to speak to Mr. Horan on how that would work, should that eventuality happen.
If I talk to him, would he told me that you were planning on trying to eliminate a bus, that he would put my name on the top of the list, you had no problem with that? So I'm just, want to confirm that with you people, but I want you to look into why we have spare buses doing our late bus in our other runs, that you're trying to eliminate a bus right now. I mean, I know you have problems to cut budgets here, but you're, in our contract, it's supposed to be done by a mainline bus, not a spare bus, and it's being done right now by a spare bus, and we can't make the runs right now. Excuse me? There is consolidations you could do on the runs to make this time better, not to eliminate a bus, but that's not my job. I've been in this for 24 years, and, I mean, I can see where you could save money, but that's, I'm not an administrator or nothing, but you need to look in.
Let me ask one question, please.
Yes.
Let Ms. Dr. Ojai answer this question, and I think we're gonna need to get more information and get back to, but we're not gonna have the, going back and forth with the committee members.
You know, I don't have the information that you're looking for tonight. All I can say is that, you know, this is, you know, looking to Mr. Horan and his, you know, what he can see, particularly based on an audit that was just done, and, you know, none of this is easy, obviously. You know, I'm not crazy about reducing any more of our bus fleet, and I'm trying to find, you know, in my proposal, you know, what can we do to come even close to the current program, which is, you know, part of the discussion we've had tonight? And, you know, considering what we anticipate for next year, and, you know, Mr. Horan, who knows this system as well as obviously anybody, we can see that we can make things work with one less bus. Now, I, you know, I feel bad that that affects you personally, but I would imagine, and I'm sure, that Mr. Horan will follow the procedures that we've established contractually about, you know, who's the first bus to go and the first bus to come back in. Shouldn't we hire a bus, you know, you know, the...
first bus to come back in. Shouldn't we hire a bus, you know, the next time?
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't anticipate that any of that would change. I don't know if that answers your question.
Somewhat, but...
You know, if you...
I'm just saying, I've just had this for 24 years. You're eliminating one, I know you have to do it, but you're going to, might be eliminating another one, instead of eliminating me, that the contract comes over to me, that, you know, I'm not losing this bus.
Well, I just, I just don't, my understanding of the process is that it isn't really necessarily a choice that we make. It's simply a procedure that we follow based on last in and first out and all that, that kind of, you know, movement of buses.
All right, but...
And when people's contracts come up and those kinds of things, you know, you have abilities to non-renew, you know, it's certainly not anything personal toward any one particular person.
All right.
And we can't, we can't make decisions about these kinds of things based on, well, you know, we like you or we don't like you. You know, it's nothing to do with this.
Well, you did that last year. You eliminated, you were eliminating Bus 19. You put him on the top of the list, plus 26 decided to give up her bus, boom, Bus 19's back in business. You set a precedence there.
We will certainly take your request...
You know what I'm saying?
And make sure that we keep that in mind, and we will get back to you as soon as we can.
The other thing is, is that you want to try to eliminate a bus. I own, I have two buses. And my other bus you're eliminating now is doing overrun in the glen that my other bus can't take because I have too many children. That's where I don't understand where you can lose a bus. I got it in two spots.
Can I ask a question, please?
Overload on Fishing Cove and Stony Lane.
You're forgetting, because we have a lot of contractual things, and I don't want to get into that.
We're just here for citizens' comments, so I thank you, I thank you, Mr. Hill.
Please, may I ask him a question? I want a clarification, a clarification.
Yes, absolutely. You may ask him a question.
Thank you.
You may ask him a question after the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just think, consideration of that contract, that's all.
Thank you.
You did it last year. You know, I should go to the top of the list this year, too.
The clarification I want is...
And we'll have to get back to you on that, Mr. Hill, because that's not a question that we can answer here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But just to answer my question, please. You made an inference that...
Okay, Mr. Mudge.
I thought you said I could ask a question.
I said, after the meeting, you may go and ask a question.
But I'd like to ask it now.
Citizens' comments. They get to come up and comment.
Well, then, why can you comment on them, and everybody else, and I as a school committee member can't? Why can't Dr.?
I was thanking him, and I said, I was thanking him, and I said that we will have to get back to him with Mr. Horan.
Unbelievable.
Okay. So Mrs. Carroll has asked that we adjourn to citizens', I mean, to executive session. My only other question is, did the committee want to have the discussion on the delivery of, basically, does the committee wish to pay Ms. Berglin for additional copies of the agenda for Mr. Mudge? That's my question, if you want to discuss that now or later.
Motion to recess or adjourn into executive session, or something? Recess or adjourn?
We are recessing to executive session, and would think, understanding that we'll be adjourning when we come out of executive session.
Motion to recess into executive session, and...
Second?
And the rest.
And it will be adjourned after executive session.
Right, we'll be adjourning after executive session.
Yeah, all those in favor of adjourning to executive session, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Thank you.